We'll be broadcasting. And we are going live, I will defer to the chair. All right, thank you, Mr. Port. Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the New Report Zoning Board of Appeals for this evening, the meeting of August twenty seventh. So, uh, looks like it's a sort of a short evening, there's not a whole lot of us in the room tonight, so we'll. We'll try to be as brief as we can and get through the business of this evening. I'll begin by the roll called in our public hearings. We'll go in the sequence. That we have, we have one, two, three, four applications that are before us tonight. I'll start by introducing the board, calling the role, establishing our quorum, and then we will. Make note of our four voting members, which are the four of us, um, five, five, sorry, five voting members.
Lynn's expected.
Who is not, we know that, is Larry not joining us?
Larry's not.
So Larry's Larry's not, and.
Greg's not with him.
Greg, Lynn's possibly coming?
She's expected, yeah.
So we'll, we'll just get started in the meantime.
In time.
What's that?
Nothing.
About that in minutes. Okay, um, it's seven P M. And so we'll get started. I'll, my name is Rob Champetti. I have the privilege of serving as Chair of the Z B A. To my immediate left is Walter Bud Shannon. To his left, Mr. Ken Swanton, our Vice Chair. And to my immediate right, we have Stephen Delisle, our Secretary. We're expecting Ms. Lynn Scow, who's our Associate Member, and will be. Our vote, our fifth voting member this evening. The five voting members are myself, Mr. Shannon, Ms. Swanton, Mr. Delisle, and Ms. Scout. And that's just for sort of legal disclosure. We have two members absent this evening. One is Mr. Greg Bennett and the other, Mr. Larry Ginta. But I'll start by calling the role, establish a department, we'll jump right into our agenda and get started. So calling the role, New Report's only Board of Appeals, Mr. Stephen Delight here, Mr. Ken Swanton.
Here.
Mr. Walter Bud Shannon.
Here.
Mr. Gregory Bennett is absent. Ms. Scout is expected but currently absent. Mr. Ginta is absent. Rob Champetti present. We have four members. That's a minimum board for the moment. Just in the event and just out of full sort of transparency. Is there, if there's any member as we await Ms. Scout's arrival, we have a minimum board at the moment, so we're going to proceed and start our business. Uh, and just wait for her arrival. In the meantime, we have a minimum board which will avail any applicant this evening, and I'll ask the question as we go through the sequence, and if Ms. Scout's still not here, I'll ask. Uh, your option to whether you wish to proceed, knowing that in order to be successful, you'd need an unanimous vote of four in the affirmative in order to prevail. What normally we have, we give every applicant the option to to choose to come back in time and they have more members of the board, but we have a minimum board count right now, so I'll ask that question before we get started. And starting now with our public hearing. Uh, for anyone in the room that might not be familiar with the process of this evening, and I'll just be very brief, but I like to. Kind of go through the the flow of the evening, just so everyone knows what to expect, in case you're here as an applicant, as a representative of an applicant, or just as a member of the public, expecting to speak and share thoughts with respect to an application. I begin every application of the zoning board. We follow a modified form of Robert's Rules of Order. There are five segments to every zoning board public hearing. They begin with me reading the legal notice. It's essentially the legal notice. That would have been published in the paper that you would have read online. It's a description of the application, the applicant name themselves, as well as a description of the relief being sought under the zoning book, whether it's a variance or a special permit. I'll. Announce that with each sort of public hearing notice. I'll indicate whether the applicant seeking a special permit or a variance or a special permit for nonconformities. And then, of course. In addition to listing the name of the applicant and the address, we'll also describe in just very natural language specifically what they're asking for. The applicant seeks all necessary approvals to expand an existing porch to add square footage, etc., so that one, God forbid, needn't be a lawyer in order to understand exactly what's being asked for and what's being considered by the board. Ms. Scout's here, so we have a, um, five, we have five voting members and five members present. Um, so that's the first section of the hearing. Once I, um, will call the, uh, or sort of read the legal notice, we'll then hear from the applicant or the applicant's representative. We just ask that names and addresses be given or introductions so that was fresh and joy to my file. My keeper of the minutes can report accurate minutes along the way. We will hear from the applicant, the applicant's presentation. After we have heard from the applicant in presenting the application, and by the way, anything that's been filed with the city is contemporaneously broadcast. Online and up on the screen as well as on our laptops, so that anyone who is logged on via Zoom or anyone in the room. Uh, can see every piece of public material that's being referenced by the applicant that's being spoken of or referred to. Uh, we'll all, we'll all in this room see that, and anyone online will see it as well. Once we have heard from the applicant, I close that portion of the public hearing and we go to public comment. During public comment. Uh, Mr. Port, our Planning Director, and Ms. Caitlin Sullivan, our City Planner, uh, will, uh, Mr. Port will put up a slide that just simply describes the rules of the road for public comment. We invite everyone to please give us your name and address. Uh, just raise your hand so you can be recognized. We ask that you kindly try to govern yourselves, um, accordingly with respect to the time limit. We ask that everyone adhere to a two-minute time limit. We are flexible, and I always exercise discretion to allow folks to complete a thought. I will give you as courteously as possible sort of a heads up and warning, just so that we can hear from everyone. Know that if you do choose to speak during public comment, you needn't say that you are pro or con, though you're certainly welcome to. Um, there is no necessary requirement that you are either for or against something. You can simply stand. Give us your name and address and share your thoughts. Know, however, that, and I always say this as a disclosure, if you frame your public comment in the form of a question, please understand that we mean no intended discourtesy if we do not respond to that question right away. Know well that every member is listening carefully, taking notes. You will surely hear your question in some form, if not verbatim. Queried back by one of the members of the board in the third segment of our hearing. After we close public comment, uh, we will go to questions from the board. So if you do pose a question. Um, you needn't worry, we are listening, we mean no disrespect. We won't be under Robert's rules, won't be responding directly to the question, but we will be listening carefully. Once we go, uh, once we close public comment, we go to questions from the board. This is when members of the board will ask questions, often adapting, uh, question, you know, creating questions from the public comment section. Uh, we will then, um, go through and any members who have questions of the applicant or questions that they just wish to ask, we'll, uh, address them all. We will then close that portion of the public hearing, and we will go to deliberations. Deliberations is. The last stage of the process when you, as members of, uh, the public, which are just simply us just not sitting at this table at the moment, um, listen to us think out loud. We deliberate the legal criteria that's before us, whether it's a special permit, whether it's a variance, we deliberate the legal criteria point by point and just sort of discuss it out loud, whether. An applicant has met that burden, whether there's some questions, whether there's some externalities or, or, you know, um, can, um, circumstances that are, that are worthy of consideration. You'll hear all of that as we discuss it. Once we have completed that. Process, I close that final portion of the public hearing, and that's when I will invite a motion to approve. Note that a, um, motion to approve is only to approve in its form only. It doesn't mean. That the member of the Z B A who makes that motion to approve plans to support it, supports it. It's simply a, a form of the, uh, putting the matter on to the table for a vote, and. The, the motion is always framed in the affirmative in the form of a motion to approve. Um, once a motion is made and seconded, we then call the role. In order for an application to be successful, it has to have at least four votes in the affirmative. If it has four votes, the motion carries and the application's approved. Um, so when we go to public comment, by the way, to the extent I have anyone online, um, our, um, our sort of routine has been to poll the room members first. And then go online before we close that. So anyone in the room gets, uh, sort of, you know, first prep. Then we go online and, and we'll go through the process just as sort of slated out. So hopefully that's, um, clear, so you know what to expect this evening. And with that, we will go to our first. Application, uh, opening the public hearings this evening. Uh, we are going to hear the New Report Renovations LLC application, care of Lisa Mead, Mead Teller, and Acosta LLC. The application is ten Bolan Avenue. The applicant, the applicant seeks all necessary, um, permissions and approvals for a special permit for nonconformities. The applicant is seeking to demolish a pre-existing nonconforming house. For a lot nonconforming for area and re- and and reconstruct that new structure, um, in the form of a two-story, single-family house using the same foundation. Attorney, me. Good evening.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair and members of the board for the record, Lisa Mead, Mead Teller, Costa, during Play Street and Report. I'm here this evening with my client, Report Home Renovations LLC, George Hazel Klein, who is the Principal of that. And Matt Langes, um, who's with Scott Brown's office, who's the architect on the project. Um, as the Chair indicated, we're here for special permit for nonconformities for this property at ten Bolan Avenue. He did it the next night. Um, the property is a single-family home or was a single-family home, and the foundation is there. Um, George proposes to construct a new home and it's dead mostly on the same foundation. There's a little expansion over. On the connector in the garage, which we'll show in a little bit. Um, uh, the house has been removed already for a couple of reasons. First. Uh, the former owner, Mr. Courier, passed away in the home unattended, uh, for a number of days. Uh, there had been pets in there, well, um, as well, uncared for at the same time. Um, and there was some vegetation growing up through the home, and so in order to remove that circumstance, um, the home has been removed before this hearing. So regardless of. The outcome of the hearing, the home had to, had to be removed and will be rebuilt somehow. The project does require a special permit for nonconformities. Uh, this is the R two zoning district. It's nonconforming for a lot area as well as for, um, the secondary front yard, uh, front yard line and the rear yard line. Uh, the lot area is nine thousand four hundred and fifteen, or ten thousand is required. Um, the property has a setback of fifteen point five feet from the secondary front yard line. And twenty-five feet is required and twenty point two feet from the rear yard line where twenty-five is required. Obviously, when it was constructed, it meant the requirements, um, in existence at the time. Uh, the property conforms to all other dimension requirements and will not create any new nonconformities. Next slide, please. So the proposal is to build a, uh, to convert this, what was a ranch into a two-story colonial, which is not, um, unsimilar to other, um, homes in the area, which we'll show you in a little bit. We are going to, uh, not extend any of the, um, nonconformities, but we are going to intensify in an upward fashion the, um, rear setback in the secondary, excuse me, the primary. Front yard setback because we're going up to two stories. Um, but otherwise, the remainder of the, um, dimensional requirements remain intact. Um, so the house was a nineteen fifty-nine ranch style house. Um, and as I said, we're essentially building the same thing. So if you could go to the next slide, please. So as you can see on the site plan, um, the existing foundation is in the white. Um, and then you can see that kind of peach color. That's the addition. Underneath the addition, you can see the former connector. Um, so that's becoming a little bit bigger, and then obviously it's a two-car garage, so, um, so that's bigger as well. Um, so that you can see that all of the setbacks remain on the same, um, and or are conforming, um, on the existing site plan over existing conditions. Um, next slide, please. Uh, and so here are photographs that Scott was able to take prior to, um, the house being demolished. Uh, you can see the, the front of the house at the top left, um, corner. Then there's a side view. And then there's a portion of the rear. Um, you can see how that roof is collapsing in that one section on the top, uh, due to the, you know, obviously branches going down into it. Uh, then there's another further back rear view in the back. You can see the, um, condition of the home. Um, and then the side view off of Myrtle, you can see where the. Driveway is, um, in that current garage, which will be expanded, um, obviously in the, from the footprint that we showed. And then you see the, um, the opposite allocation. Next slide. Um, so that I'm going to turn it over to, um, Matt to go over the proposal.
Thank you, Susan. Evening, everyone. Matt Langes, uh, forty-eight Market Street, for the record, Scott Brown Architects. Um, these are the existing, uh, elevations here, and they, they kill a height of fourteen and a half feet to the ridge. Towards the midpoint of the ridge, so, uh, we're going to be expanding that to approximately twenty. So twenty-six and a half feet. Uh, sorry, hello, Doc, clear. Uh, next slide, please. So we've been trying to do a lot more of these renderings. They, the three D just paints out a much clearer picture of the goals for the project. You know, obviously, we're, we're, uh, demolishing the, demolish the, the ranch and place of the two-story colonial, but. Um, the, the, a lot of the space planning sort of remains the same. So there's an existing, uh, closest three garden, one bath, total finished square footage of about twelve, twelve hundred and forty square feet. We're also keeping three bedrooms, but adding two and a half baths, four square footage is close to twenty-four hundred square feet. Uh, with respect to the building. This rendering is, is accurate to what we've designed. Uh, but regarding the landscaping, this is more of an artistic representation. So if there's any trees to remain or any proposed that that need to come from the, the side of our tree, or, and so, uh, this doesn't reflect that. This is essentially just to see. Uh, even a, a view of the entire property. Um, from a material standpoint, we're using party board, orange, copper, exposure, uh, still sort of selecting colors, but this is like an off-white color that we've been, uh, we've been favorite. Architectural asphalt shingles, uh, rock resistant trim, seven eights, simulated divided whites, uh, pretty common to a lot of, uh, civil projects that we've done with George, but a very traditional sort of classic exterior. Uh, next slide, please. Uh, so these are the two D elevations. Uh, you know, this, this shows some grading, uh, changes, but nothing really drastic to deal with from a, a design perspective. There are a few conflict areas like kitchen cabinets and in more private spaces like bedrooms where we shrunk the windows down, but proportionally those are using similar, uh, uh, glade glazing sizes to the, to the double ones that are repeated throughout the rest of the, uh, the house. Uh, next slide, please. So the garage in the rear, these better show how the, the, the house, the connector and, and the garage are, are si- similar components to what was there. There's the, the main house, the lower garage, the, the, sorry, the lower extension in the garage that's attached. Space planning perspective, that's, it's quite similar to what was there already, the existing ranch, the connector, and then garage. And then, uh, from a, a, a design perspective, what we're doing is, uh, blowing out the rakes, adding sort of a traditional trim package with, uh, the, the eever turns and, uh, you know. From a context of, you know, perspective as well, there's, there's a mix of other two-story colonials and expanded capes that are in the surrounding area that you'll see in the, in the following pages. So. Aesthetically, we're, we're fitting right in with that among those styles, and, you know, we're not proposing anything that's so different or drastic that would alter or would negatively, uh, negatively impact the, the character of the fabric of, uh, surrounding neighborhood. So. Uh, I'll be happy to talk about more about the project details of the army, but there are no question to be general to the most.
Um, the, thank you, Matt. Um, so as the board knows, under, um, section nine, uh, the applicant needs to show two things. One, that there are no new nonconformities, and as we've shown on the site plan. Uh, there are no new nonconformities, uh, in this project. Uh, and two, that the proposed changes will not be substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood than the existing structure. Uh, here, um, the existing structure, while single-story ranch style home on the corner lot. It's a, you know, a decent sized lot for this area, nine thousand four hundred and fifteen square feet. Um, it proposes a two-story colonial on the same foundation as existing house essentially. Plus that one-story, uh, garage addition and connector, um, also very similar to what existed before. And as I show you in a moment, there are a number of colonials actually throughout the Boland, um, Myrtle Street, um, neighborhood as well. Uh, the house will be a modest rebuild considering the retained, um, siding in the center of the lot and the tall trees that exist in the neighborhood around. Uh, the property remains a single-family use, as Matt indicated. Uh, the house right now is one thousand two hundred and thirty-nine square feet. That includes the connector. And the proposed, um, living area will be two thousand four hundred square feet. Uh, neither of those calculations include the garage. The other structures and lots in the neighborhood behind High Street on Boland, Myrtle, Hope Avenue consist of one, one and a half story capes and ranches and two-story colonials and split levels. It is a mixed bag in this neighborhood for sure. Um, in fact, two of the largest homes in the area, um, one is directly, almost directly across the street at five and seven, and then just down the street at six. So all within about half dozen. Homes or lots, there are the, of the larger colonials that exist. Uh, the lot shapes and sizes, as you're going to see in a little bit, are about the same throughout the neighborhood, and this is not changing, obviously. Um, and the, the project changes stay with the traditional style of houses throughout the neighborhood. So next slide, please. And so here is, um, the houses that we're going to show you in a minute. Um, so we're the green one right in the middle. Um, and just for, um, I'm going to show you, but just for orientation, the house up to the left of the corner with the pool. Um, on Bolin, um, that's one of the larger houses. We're going to show you that. And then the one right next to it was just, is deceiving because it's an expanded cape, but it's probably the largest house in the neighborhood. So I'll show you that. And then, um, the house down, um, that's two in from the corner of Alberta and Bolin, that has that kind of L that goes all the way back to Myrtle and back. That's actually a colonial. That's actually, uh, one of the larger houses. As well, um, as well as the house on the corner of, uh, Myrtle and, um, Bolin. So all within that neighborhood, you're going to see this in a minute. So next slide, please. So, um, this is the house, um, that is directly across from the corner, if you will, and that of the corners that turns on eleven Bolin. Next slide. And then that's nine, that's right, um, right beside it, which is directly across from ten Bolin. Next slide, please. And this is eight Bolin. This is to the, um, to the left of ten Bolin. Next slide, and here's that colonial I was talking about. So this is seven Bolin, which is at a diagonal. It's got a pool in the backyard. And this is the Lucy's house. This is a larger expanded cape, um, kind of deceiving from the street, but it's got a lot of space in it. And then this is three Bolin right next to it. Next slide, please. And this is six Bolin. This is, uh, the one, this is Paige's house. And no folks in the neighborhood. Um, and so this, this is the one that runs front to back, uh, Bolin to Myrtle, and obviously it's a, it's a, a colonial, and it's, um, has over two thousand square feet as well. Next slide. And that's the rear of that house that opens up onto Myrtle. Next slide. And this is six Iona, um, on the corner. Next slide. And twenty-one Myrtle, that's the one I indicated as well. Another colonial. Next slide. And twenty-eight Myrtle, another colonial. Next slide. And then this is nineteen, nineteen and a half, obviously is split lot here, and then there's two expanded capes. Next slide. And twenty-six Myrtle. I don't know what you can call that. Uh, next slide. And twenty-four is a colonial. Um, and next slide. Fifteen seventeen Myrtle. Um, it appears to be an expanded cape in the back, sitting back there. Next slide. And twenty-two Myrtle, they have a cave. Next slide. And thirteen Myrtle, a ranch. And next slide. And nine and eleven, so you can see those are, um, expanded capes, um, one side by side, same neighborhood. Next slide. And eighteen and sixteen Myrtle. So, and again, ranches. Uh, next slide. So as you can see, there's a, a nice mixture of various architectural styles within, uh, the neighborhood. And as such, we think that this property is, um, certainly not substantially more detrimental, um, to the neighborhood than the existing home. In fact, fits right in nicely with the other architectural styles. Uh, within the neighborhood as well. Um, and with that, uh, we've, uh, be willing to answer any questions that the board might have and request the board grant a special permit for nonconformities.
Thank you. Uh, okay, we'll close this portion of the public hearing and, um, go to the public comment. Again, just putting up the slide for me. Any, uh, anyone in the room wish to speak in connection with the application? Just kindly. Raise your hand and we'll hear from you. Yes, sir.
Yeah, I just had a question about the rear lot. It seems like, uh, that the lot is twenty-four feet or twenty-five feet in the rear. And it seems like it's going down to fourteen, which is a body and heart property, and, um. It's only fourteen feet away, but. Not a huge problem with that. I just want to make sure that the trees are not damaged on that lot line. If there are any exceptions, the, the trees that, that's just a. Very good. I'll wait till then. And what, and also how you guys feel about the reductions of thirty-five feet standards?
And what, and your name and address, sir, just for.
Fairly, like twenty-two Myrtle.
Great. Uh, and during the opening, I just, uh, then I'll just remind everyone, though we invite anyone to frame public comment and form the question, we mean no discourtesy, and we don't address that directly, but. We're, we're taking notes, so to answer your question, without really getting into the questions, we'll be, um, we'll be inquiring into all of that, and certainly we'll take sharp note of your, um, concerns regarding the trees. And, and the lot line. Yeah, we're going to get, we're going to collect up, uh, any, you know, comments or questions and formulate our own, and, and so, um, stay tuned and thank you. Uh, was there anything further? I didn't want to cut it off.
So far, no.
Very good. Um, okay, anyone else wish to speak in connection with the application? And do we have anyone online? Uh, nobody's raised their hand at least. Very good. Um, seeing no further hands in the room or online, um, we will close that portion, uh, of, uh, public comment and go to questions from the board. Uh, who wishes to? To start us off?
I'll, I'll begin. Um, well, let's, let's go to the Jonathan, the neighbor's question about, uh. The impact is, if you pull up the site plan, the site plan shows some fairly substantial trees, one's almost right on the border. I mean. Would you first talk about what the impact of this will be on those trees?
Sure. Um, if, if I could before I did that, can I answer the setback question? Just so.
Sure.
Sure. All right. So, um, just to orient everybody. So this is a corner lot. So there are two front yards and only one side yard. And so the side yard is opposite Bolin. Uh, excuse me, opposite Bolin Avenue on this side. So that's actually a side yard that's next to your property, and it's a ten-foot setback, um, not a twenty-five foot setback.
Just, just, just on that, could you?
Sure.
Now, I guess the way the, your report, uh, ordinances work, whichever street is the longer one, whichever front is, could you?
Correct.
Could you clarify which of those? I can't tell from here.
Yeah, no, the.
Which Bowlin Avenue is the.
The bottom Bowlin Avenue. The bottom Bowlin Avenue is the longest by three feet.
Okay.
Um, and so the op, the line opposite that is the rear.
Okay.
And then the line to the left is the side.
Okay.
And then, of course, the secondary front yard is the other Bolin Avenue. So that's that. Um, and I'm going to let George answer the tree, um, question.
Yeah, so, uh, that was Catherine's study yesterday. Um, and you did talk about that. We are going to construct a, a cedar fence on that property line. Um, there are no trees right now on their property line that would be in danger of being disturbed, you know, during the construction, um, of the garage. Um, the tree that's kind of shown directly to the left of the garage now is more of a bush that was, that has been removed, but the trees on the property line, you know, as I said, I'm. You know, I've done this number of times. I always meet with all the neighbors and let them know, you know, what I'm doing and to ensure that their vegetation or their property is being protected. Uh, I've never had an issue with it in the past. Um, so, yeah, I'm absolutely committed to ensuring that. Any trees along the property line, um, other than the ones that we collaborate on and consider for trimming if needed, will be protected and not harmed.
For clarity, could you, and there are three things that look like trees there. Could you indicate which is, which is out to a tree and which is a bush?
Yeah, he's, so this was a dead tree here, right on our, this property.
That's a dead tree.
Dead tree, which has been removed. This was more of a, a large bush.
Okay.
And then these, this is, there are actually a couple of trees that probably are realistically on their property line that aren't being shown on survey, and of course. You know, any tree that's even straddling the property line, I'm not, you know, I'm never going to take down until I have a discussion with, you know, the neighbor, but.
So, so what, what about that tree, the, the one in the middle there?
Here?
Yes.
Yes, that still is there. That's my knowledge, and again, I won't take it down until, like, you know.
So the excavation for the foundation and all that's not going to affect, you believe?
No, no, it will be a maximum, you know, five feet for the garage just to cross wall, so we don't have to dig down eight feet or anything like that.
And you mentioned the cedar, uh, fence. Is, is that the, what's the line with the dots? Is that says wire?
Metal fence.
That says wire fenced on the.
Yeah, existing wire fence will be removed. Yeah.
So that's being removed.
Yep.
But the, um, a cedar fence is being put along the lot line between this house and twenty-two Myrtle?
Yeah, typically I'll keep it in about a foot, um, just to, you know, stay away from any type of lot line disputes or whatnot.
The landscaping's not shown on the plan.
Yeah.
Okay, but fences we often see on plans.
Yes, sometimes you do sometimes.
Okay, well, this time we don't. So I just, for the record, you're putting a, you're putting a fence along that side.
Yes, for the record, yes.
I'll call us the fence.
That's six feet.
Six feet, okay.
Yeah.
I don't have any other questions. Very good. Um, thank you, Mr. Swanton. Any other questions?
Uh, that one, yes, please. Um, I noticed there were three letters of support.
Yeah, thank you. I forgot to say.
There were, uh, eight, five, Bolin, and twenty-two Myrtle. Do you know if seven and nine, which are directly kind of across? Anyone speak to them?
So not.
The yays or nays?
So nine, uh, directly across, uh, nobody is available there.
Okay.
That's in an estate, so it's not available. And, uh, George, did you speak to the woman at seven?
Yes, I spoke to.
I saw the pool.
No, no, actually, just to, uh, clarify, um, it's the letter here, letter here, uh, affirmative. Uh, I've spoken to these individuals here. Um, they're generally in agreement with it, but Joe, the husband was, uh, away traveling. Um, but she, uh, did, uh, wasn't agreeing with it. This is, uh, I believe, as, uh, Lisa said, they're unavailable. Yeah, and I did, uh, give a set of plans to Nancy, she was busy at the time, and I wasn't able to get her some.
Thank you. Sure.
Very good. Uh, any other questions?
Yeah, I've one, just a clarification. Uh, I couldn't, from the presentation, it seemed that the. Existing foundation would remain, but then from the plans, it says proposed foundation. So I was just curious as to what's the happening with the foundation.
Sorry, I can address it. It's really just the main, the, the white box essentially. The white box is going to remain, uh, the, the footprint, because it's, it's expanding and.
Uh, the, the footprint, because it's, it's expanding and, and, um, a little different on the side from this portion over, uh, part that's gonna be remaining. But this main box of, of the ranches is the part that's gonna remain.
Okay. Any other questions? Um, my last, my only question is, uh, sir, does that fairly seem to address, uh, your questions before we move on?
Yeah, thank you.
Very good.
Okay, thank you.
No, uh, well, so, um, we did close that, but do you have a comment?
Um, yeah, it is our question.
Yeah, I, I, I'm happy to indulge. Sure. So can you guys just clarify what you mean by two-story compared to a two-and-a-half, is that?
Sure, can we go to the elevations, please? Uh, the proposed elevations.
Sorry.
Yeah, I can, I can justify them, so, and, so this is a, a traditional two-story colonial, I mean, from this portion above is, is essentially inaccessible, there's not a staircase that goes up there, it's just that attic pulled down. Uh, typically it would be for mechanical equipment or storage or that sort of thing, so, uh, two-and-a-half story would essentially take use of that space for some kind of proposed, uh, function, but, uh, we're not in this case. The two stories are basically from this, uh, this plate line down, which is, uh, the first and the second floor, if that, that helps.
Yeah, I just need a good clarification, so you're saying that it depend on the owner, I guess, is that a livable space or not?
The attic? No, no, it's inaccessible, I mean, it would be like a traditional pull-down, like a stubble that would be, uh, uh, near a staircase. So it will be a stair pull-down from there, but not livable square footage.
Very good, thank you, um, and thank you, sir, uh, so uh, any other questions from the board before we move on? Seeing none, uh, we'll close that portion of the public hearing and go to deliberations, and again, we're deliberating the criteria for a special permit for non-conformities, uh, who wishes to take things off, going through the analysis?
I'll, I'll start, um, you know, the first point, uh, no new non-conformities, I think we agree with that. Case on the, uh, it's more different of a neighborhood, um, you know, it is a high five of houses in that neighborhood, there are two stories, there are one-and-a-half stories. Uh, a lot of, there are a lot of, uh, one-streeted capes and ranches, but I don't, I don't think this will in any way, uh, you know, look worse or, or be out of place as far as scaling and asking. Actually a beautiful building, I think it'll fit in nicely, it fits on that corner of lot quite well. Um, and as, as we, uh, discussed a little bit, there are three letters of support, no, no negative comments. Uh, so with that said, I, I can support the, uh, the application.
Very much, very, very good, uh, thank you, Mr. Chen, um, any further deliberations?
Uh, I, I would add to that, the, um, um, you know, my initial reaction is the neighborhood has quite a few small homes, um, this one, um, though, is very similar, uh, in square footage to both, um, number six and number seven, uh, Bollin, or right nearby. So that helped me with this, also, the lack of, uh, a third floor. I mean, technically, a future owner could put a staircase in and have access, but it doesn't look like a whole lot of headroom up there as far as, uh, much of a floor. Um, so, uh, I too, uh, can support this application, I would like to point out, though, that I think it's important that our approval it, it adds the, the fence that came up tonight that wasn't on the plan. So I, I would like to include the, the fence, uh, in, in my supporting this.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Swanton, any, uh, other deliberations? Um, I'll also note that, um, under the tree and sidewalk, uh, ordinance, it appears that, uh, DPS had noted that the applicant agreed to plant two new street trees in accordance with specifications provided by DPS, um, as well as uh, a possible change in curb cut prior to a building permit, is that, is that been agreed to, or is it, is it just with respect to street trees?
Yeah, I didn't think that the curb cut would be prior to a building permit, and we're really just s- slightly widening the existing curb cut, so I didn't, I think maybe that was a boilerplate type of comment, but
Okay, uh, then we can, and that makes sense from a construction sequence standpoint, that makes total sense.
The way it's been worded lately, it's, it's, it's weird, I don't really like it, but it's prior to the building permit being final. Which means before the occupancy permit is what Jennifer has explained to me.
Well, uh, we'll have a conversation with the zoning administrator in turn, and we'll, we'll talk about whether we can rephrase a little
Yeah, so, so maybe
I think that's the intent, everybody would agree that that's the
I, I think the language, the language that we're saying is prior to building permit closeout, and closeout isn't actually a term of art, but we understand what it means.
Yeah.
But the term of art would be the issuance of a certificate of occupancy, so maybe we just use the language that is used in form and
Yeah, we, uh, it's essentially referring back to how we had previously used the verbiage, I think, uh, and we could talk about the zoning administrators, who's obviously not here with us tonight, but I think that goes back in essence to, and I, I think we agree with the con- context here. Um, it's just that, uh, the zoning administrator is thinking of it from the sort of online permitting perspective and the software and so forth, and so triggering steps and so forth, so fully understood, I think we can work that out and resolve back to, I think, with the more typical verbiage that is utilized, uh,
Yeah, well, I think just using the standardized, like, the sort of legal binocular will allow
Right.
We will prevent those of us most susceptible to making that error from making that error, so I, I think, we all know what it means. Um, but that's, I think that's helpful, so, um, was
That's okay.
Okay, otherwise?
Perfect.
Okay, great, um, uh, seeing no further deliberations and noting the, uh, DPS recommendation on, uh, street trees planting, I will close uh, deliberations and, um, we will go to, uh, a motion, do, uh, do we have a motion to approve and a second? And if so, are there any conditions?
I, I, I'll make a draft motion, I'm, I'm sorry, I'll make a motion to approve the special permit for non-conformities for ten Bollin Avenue. Uh, with the special condition, the applicant shall plant two street trees in accordance with specifications provided by the Department of Public Services. Um, said improvement should be completed prior to the occupancy permit, let me just say that.
Yeah, yeah, we, we typically use to say, uh, prior to the issuance of an occupancy permit.
They're fine.
Very good, um,
I, I'd also like to add a second condition, that the, uh, six-foot, uh, cedar fence that was discussed, uh, tonight be included along the, the wall, uh, of the property line at twenty-two Myrtle.
Or just installed prior to the issuance of
And installed prior to the issuance of an occupancy permit.
Fair, okay, um, very good, thank you, uh, thank you, Mr. Swanton, um, motions were made with conditions and a second?
All second.
Very good, motions made and seconded, calling the roll, uh, Mr. Chen.
Yes.
Mr. Swanton.
Yes.
Mr. Billam.
Yes.
Miss Scott.
Yes.
Rob, Chen, ready, yes, that's five in the affirmative, the eyes have it, motion carries. Very good, moving on to our next application, um, this is the application of Laura and Jack Boyce, uh, sorry, this is the application of Stephen Lewis, uh, thirty-three Merrill Street. This is a, a request for a variance to allow a minimum lot area of nine thousand three hundred fifty square feet, where fifteen thousand square feet is required for a two-family use, uh, and presenting for the applicant is Mr. Nick Cracknell, Mr. Cracknell, good evening.
Good evening.
And feel free to just say next, and I'll play.
Thank you. Uh, let me just start by, uh, appreciating your time and consideration of this application, we put a lot of heavy lifting and time into preparing this application for the board. So I'm gonna attempt just to highlight and, and not do what I guess I normally do, which is say too much, go too long. But we really have, uh, worked through this over the last three months, uh, with the, the applicant, may we go to the next slide? Uh, Steve Lewis from Newbury Port Properties, he's a local resident living in the West End. Steve has, uh, done several projects before, both the Board of Appeals and the Planning Board, through the, the six C special permit. Uh, I've represented him on at least three other projects. I think they've all been successful and well received by the neighborhood uh, over the last fifteen years that, that we've done those three or four projects. In terms of the design team that, that, uh, prepared the application, Scott Brown, who was a, a, here for the previous, uh, application, and maybe the next one. He's the project architect that's prepared the renderings and worked on a, a lot of the building design issues uh, for the property, John Hargraves has done the civil work. I've been doing the land use planning and a lot of the neighborhood outreach, pretty much all of it. Uh, and I'd be remiss not to add sort of the fourth bucket there on the design team, which is, uh, a lot of the direct abutters that have given us input on our initial concept and refined this plan through the past six, eight weeks that we've been, uh, I've been trotting it around the neighborhood, next slide please. So while we're here, uh, you guys are aware of it, but a, anybody in the audience, uh, if it isn't obvious already, we're looking at a three-step approval process, we, we hope we are, this is step one. Uh, if we're successful here in getting the dimensional variance to continue this uh, project, we will have two, uh, subsequent steps you're well aware of. We have to get a preservation restriction and a restoration plan, excuse me. Um, I've got a bottle of water, Jim, could you just grab it, uh, yeah, sorry, um, we will be going, thank you. We will be going, if we're successful here, to the historic commission with a detailed survey of the property, which has not yet been done, this property is not as best I understand it, in the, uh, previous, um, surveys that were done on historic properties, it's historically significant, but there doesn't appear to be a survey form. We're gonna have to commission that with an architectural historian. Uh, we plan on doing that, yeah, if, again, we're successful here with the dimensional variance. Obviously, the last step of the six C, the, the six C, uh, section of the zoning ordinance is the special permit issued by the planning board. So the historic commission, if we, uh, negotiate a preservation, reservation restriction on the exterior of the structure, we will then present that to the planning board under the special permit. Uh, so again, we're here for step one, we need a dimensional variance for the lot area, there's ninety-three hundred and fifty square feet on this lot and fifteen thousand square feet is required for a two-family use, next slide please. Why, why have we chosen a six-C design? Uh, essentially, it's, it's less non-conforming, uh, in terms of what we're proposing here and dropping the, uh, existing use from a three-family to a two, two-family, uh, the building and the lot will be less non-conforming. Uh, there are, there's, uh, non-conforming curb cut, there's fifty feet of pavement on Russia Street, uh, on the side street of this lot that supports parking for four or five cars. We bring that into conformity with what would normally be expected and required for off-street parking for a single or two-family structure. We'd address some importantly structural encroachments that are on this property, there are longstanding encroachments related to a, a carport, a fence. We've got a, a large mature tree on the backside of that house in the rendering that's, that's on, uh, Mr. Lewis's property, but it, it's branching pattern and the canopy, uh, uh, obviously covers more, more than just this lot, it, it covers the, uh, the budding property at twenty-nine Merrill. Uh, but at the end of the day, it's a better design outcome to succeed, especially compared to what the zoning ordinance offers as exemptions for single or two families under the, the ninety-three section of the code, which we'll talk about a couple of slides. So we're looking at, uh, similar building volumes to what might be allowed in an as-of-right scenario without a public process, without a preservation restriction, without any payment to the, uh, affordable housing trust as part of the mitigation that comes with the six C. Uh, without any design review, without any neighborhood outreach, without any collaborative efforts to make sure this is a good fit for this neighborhood. We think the six C option benefits all parties, it benefits Steve's, it benefits the direct abutters, the surrounding neighborhood, and my extension to the city. It results in less impervious surface than the six C option, uh, affords, uh, Steve under, under the current zoning ordinance. It results in larger and usable open space, which the six C, I would argue, uh, discourages usable open space by forcing all new expansions to a single or two-family uh, that don't create new non-conformities or intensify existing non-conformities, it forces you to the middle of the lot uh, so you're not creating a non-conformity, which creates awkward massing, uh, a design that's not commensurate with most of Newburyport. Uh, certainly this neighborhood, and creates dysfunctional open space and breaks the, uh, the, the build-two lines that are really strong, as all of you know, in most of historic Newburyport. Uh, completely in contrast with what the twentieth century zoning requires for, for front yard setbacks. Uh, it also offers importantly an opportunity to, to not just save these larger trees, there's two of them that, that straddle the line uh, of this property and the abutting properties on Russia and Merrill. By not going in, uh, aggressively to the side and rear yard setbacks with any expansions or paved areas and pulling paved areas out of those side yard setbacks. We enhance the tree preservation on both, uh, the, uh, the abutting properties, and then lastly, uh, you know, parking is a premium in, uh, a lot of the historic portions of Newburyport. The direct abutter to this property has, uh, at best ten feet to the sidewall of the house. Uh, the fence, uh, that they, they either installed or participated in is on this property, so we've worked through uh, with the direct abutters, uh, the idea of having an exclusive use easement and cleaning up the park and cleaning up the carport that encroaches this property that's been there for some time, as well as the, the recent fence that was installed. So, uh, next slide please. So thi- this is the design approach that, that our team took, uh, I'm sure other people follow this, but thi- this is sort of a really, uh, tried and true process that I've been using on these projects for twenty years. We, we have to get, like everybody, a good understanding of the existing conditions of the property and then move into the next step. Well, what are the design options for this three-family structure that sits on this corner lot? We have to look at the dimensional, uh, controls, density controls that are in the zoning ordinance, we looked at, uh, nine B three in terms of as-of-right expansions, we modeled those. Uh, became very clear to us that they're, they create a lot of problems, I think, for the, uh, the massing, the scale, the rhythm, the character of that development in that neighborhood. So then we, we, we stepped back and said, okay, wh- what, what would really work? What would you do in the nineteenth century on this lot when just about everything out here was built by the nineteenth century? So we looked at the neighborhood context, uh, meaning the immediate, about twenty, twenty-three properties. Uh, with a heavy focus on the, uh, you know, ten or twelve properties that directly abut thirty-three, uh, Merrill. We then developed a concept line, what I call the alternative option, which is, uh, again, the six C. And the reason I've colored the fifth step there is, we then, they sent me out to, uh, start knocking on doors and talking to people that live in that neighborhood to show them what our initial findings were, that nine B three, which is what we're gonna talk about in a second, uh, the non-public process, the non-restation, the non-affordable housing payment to the trust. Uh, the non-design review, that build whatever you can fit in there and whatever style you want, uh, because there's no public process. There's, we presented the shortcomings, uh, of that approach, and what we thought the benefits were, uh, again, going back to a traditional land use pattern that this neighborhood has in spades, very few buildings that are out in this immediate neighborhood uh, do not comport to what was originally built there in the early eighteenth century. So then we, we took that input, uh, over several weeks from, uh, several of the abutters, especially the immediate abutters on all sides. And we refined the site plan and the building, uh, design. Uh, and then, uh, once we've decided we had a project that made sense to go the variance approach to do the six C, we addressed the hardship criteria and findings, so that's what I'm gonna give you a quick overview of, and it's in the application that you, you already presumably re- reviewed. So, next slide please. The existing conditions, ninety-three hundred and fifty square feet, it's a relatively large lot. Most lots of this immediate neighborhood are, have an average of forty-one hundred square feet for a single family, it is a three-family use. It represents four percent of the, the surrounding context in terms of three families. Seventy-five percent of the lots of this neighborhood are single families, twenty-one percent are two families, and four are threes. Again, it's not the R-two district, it's the immediate neighborhood. Uh, we've got eighty-three feet of frontage on Merrill and a hundred and sixteen on Russia, this is the R-two district. The ownership of that structure, at least recently, was, was rental, it's, I know it's never been condominiumized, so it's, ever since it was a three-family, it's been a rental, uh, property. Uh, its unique features, which are important to point out, is ninety percent of that structure is in the front yard setback. So while it fits the established front yard setback, a- a- and everything that's been built on Russia Street, and then both sides on Merrill Street, uh, it's non-conforming, other than the fact that, uh, you're, you're able to insert a new building and follow that established front yard setback, which is about four and a half feet. Uh, the, the front yard setback in the R-two district, as most people, uh, in the room know, is twenty feet, which is, uh, creates the gap-tooth effect uh, of, uh, of creating a pattern that doesn't exist, and it certainly wouldn't add to the fabric of the neighborhood to set something back twenty feet of any consequential size. There's the two large shade trees, one on either side, you can't really see them in that aerial photo, but, uh, there's one on, on the, uh, the, uh, north side of the property, and then one on this, uh, the east side. Uh, there's multiple structural encroachments, I've already spoken about the fence, the carport. Um, are the two main structural, uh, encroachments on the property, and then there's this really large oversized curb cut, almost half the frontage of Russia Street is, uh, set up for four or five, you could probably squeeze six cars, but five cars will fit in there uh, all backing into Russia Street, and that's been the primary parking for the three-family use of the property. I'll point out, there are, there is a curb cut that's about eighteen feet wide on Merrill I'll point out there are, there is a curb cut that's about eighteen feet wide on Merrill Street. It, the street was redone recently and that curb cut exists, and there's gravel actually. Uh to support parking off Merrill Street that you can't really see in that aerial photo. Uh, okay, next slide, please. So the only non-conformity on that, other than the use, is the uh lot area and because of the uh exemption for the front yard setback. So there's the structure that sits on the property. It's built. Previous to eighteen fifty. We don't really know. That's off the assessments record, but it's at least that old. Uh uh you'll see in the in the application. It's on some historic maps. Prior to eighteen eighteen fifty-one, the earliest map in the application. It's an old structure. It's tired structure. Uh it it's it's not. Uh it it, like so many buildings in Newburyport in the twentieth century, suffered the economic decline of the city after the war. And the fact that it was probably converted to a three-family in the mid-twentieth century. Uh the vinyl was applied, the windows were ripped out, vinyl windows were inserted. Uh non-contributing stairs, railing, uh concrete block wall was was added, again, all in the twentieth century. Uh not unusual to Newburyport, but these are the kinds of things that are coming back. Uh and being restored in Newburyport. That's what we'd like to do with this project and take it to the historic commission to do it right. Next slide, please. So the existing conditions, again, just the non-conformity for the lot uh area and the fifteen thousand square feet is for a two-family use. I think that's why it's outlined in red. Uh next slide, please. So looking at the nine V three option, uh because the, you know, wh- my main conversation with everybody in the neighborhood is, look. Uh folks, we got a choice to make uh as a community and as a neighborhood. The choice is. This is not gonna stay the way it is. This has been purchased by Steve. It's a three-family use. Could he come up with a special perm for non-conformities like the last application or the next six you've got? Yeah, but that's discretionary and you have to go through your public process and and render your findings. The nine V three doesn't need that uh process. So what's the nine V three option uh provide for single and two families, which this would be converted to a two, and then this would be a two-step. Action. A kitchen would come out and turn to a two-family use, and then the nine V three uh permit would be applied for. You can add up to five hundred square feet of gross living area. Uh to each unit, which is a thousand square feet. You can add whatever other volume you want, uh that's non-living space. As long as you don't create a new non-conformity. Uh or intensify an existing non-conformity. We know we don't have any non-conformity, so it essentially allows the lot to fill up to the maximum coverage. Which is twenty-five percent, which this is meant to illustrate what a reasonable build-out would be. If this application's denied and uh the developer, the owner, the new owner Steve decides uh. He's gotta go a different route than the six C. He does an addition uh all over this building and shown in yellow. There are two-car garages, which is the non-havitable space with living space above. The attics would probably not be living space because they'd exceed the five hundred square feet, so they'd have to pull downstairs. Uh in order to preserve the roof form. Uh and that little single-car garage that sits in the side yard is next to the Norway Maple, uh next to twenty-nine. Merrill Street. Uh which again, covers more of the lot, but gets up to twenty-four and a half percent. Coverage still seventy-five percent of the lot is open. But one of the big problems, other than the massing of nine B three and what it does, it forces you to the middle of the lot. You can't create a nu- new non-conformity, so you gotta go inside those setbacks. So if you look at the image, uh the site plan on the left, everything has to be within this. Little square. The only reason this one can sit out in the rear yard setback is because it's a necessary structure and you can have it six feet off the line if it's under. Under the uh the twenty-two by forty-four square feet, which it is. It's a single-car garage. So these things sit inside the setback, which pushes everything to the middle. Again, accentuates what this neighborhood isn't, which is uh, you know, principal structures that are. That shape, that form, and that set that far setback from the street edge. There's a solid street wall up both sides of Russia Street. It's fantastic. And it comes right down through this portion of Russia Street. You've got the same effect. Uh to a large degree on uh everything on Merrill Street has the same effect, except some of the buildings built in the late twentieth century. And then into the early twenty-first century, again, because of twenty twentieth century zoning that's pushing these things back. Uh fighting what makes Newburyport one of the greatest places to live. On a reasonably small lot is having zero to no no front yard setback, shallow side yard setbacks, and privacy in your backyard. If you don't have the privacy in a functional backyard, these are very difficult places to live. Because you've gotta have a modicum of privacy. This arrangement with nine B three that forces everything into the middle. Fragments the open space, increases it by fifty percent compared to the six C. The impervious surface on this lot. So we'll get twice as much driveway and parking on the lot because the buildings get pushed away from the front yard setback. That is not a parking arrangement that you find at all, uh except for mistakes in the north end. People park beside their structure. Uh they have smaller parking lots, small parking areas, their driveways are really small. These get long because again, you you're your garage is pushed. Uh away from the street into the middle of the lot. So. Bad open space, more impervious surface. Uh it's a similar volume uh in the six C you're gonna see, but a very different outcome from a design perspective. Okay, um, next slide, please. Next slide. Oh, sorry, I'm sorry. Okay, so this was what we defined, mainly me as the neighborhood context, the people that I think, the people that affect. And are affected by this lot, what happens to it? So I went all the way up Russia to to uh Ken Ken Street, more or less. Because that building wall is just so pronounced all the way up to Ken Street. This, yeah, thank you. The the same on Merrill. So you can see the building built nineteen ninety-eight by Terry Jones. It followed the zoning and it got pushed back because he didn't come in and seek a variance to build this a new structure. So it's not aligned with everything that's out there. Is it? It's a disaster? No, that isn't an asset for Newburyport to have that building setback like that. Uh everything else here, you know, that's a new building. It it's interesting that there was a building here, a building here. That that building was built, uh I think, in around two thousand. It's a two-family, pretty well situated, so they they must have had something to work with to put it in the right spot. Uh there was a massive church here until nineteen forty, and that building was built nineteen forty-eight. Or forty-five, and that's forty-eight. That was a, so this building is setback. You say, well, what's going on there? That was a workshop. That was a workshop converted to a single-family house. Fifteen, twenty years ago. Uh came, probably came in here and got a permit to convert that into a single family. But everything else out here, very strong land use pattern. So it's important if we were to get this, I feel like, and the neighbors feel like, that I've spoken with, it's important to get this right. If it's gonna expand. Next slide, please. So there's twenty-eight properties there that uh are in there. So one of the, one of the main pieces here to take away from those twenty-eight, again, I covered it. Three-quarters of them are singles. Uh a fifth of them are two families, very few are three, or one of three. This is not unimportant and it's not surprising. The singles are much smaller. The zoning requires ten thousand. The average lot size is four for a single. The zoning requires uh. Uh fifteen for the two and ten is the average for the two, and it's almost the same for the three. Again, those lot sizes that are shown in blue, they weren't great. Because we don't have twenty-foot setbacks uh on these lots. Uh we've got very traditional architectural patterns. I I didn't put a slide in here, but if you look at those twenty-eight structures. Sixty-five percent of them are built in the nineteenth century. Uh twenty percent, we've got three or we've got four houses from the early eighteenth century. We've got some of the oldest homes in Newburyport in this twenty-eight unit, uh twenty-eight. Property area that we're studying. But what's also interesting is twenty-five percent of the properties. That were built in the twentieth and the twenty-first century. They follow traditional architectural design principles. Most, whether they they probably did it voluntarily. We don't have a historic district. It wasn't this process with the the preservation restriction. That's only been on the books for twenty years. A lot of, we're lucky. Uh I think the people that live there are lucky. That a lot of the architecture that's gone into that neighborhood in the last forty years has been fairly well-designed, maybe not in the right spot all the time. But the buildings all sort of tell a similar story. They're all respectful. They're all mindful of each other. And they all work together as contributing buildings, even if they're new, to make that a great neighborhood. And those built-in lines, again, that's what makes Newburyport and a lot of places like Newburyport awesome places to live. Is these strong built-in lines that thankfully aren't twenty feet back off the street. Next slide, please. So this, this was funny. I stumbled on this eighteen fifty-one McIntyre map. You know, it it's not in here to like, you know, tell a big story, but there were two single-family houses on this lot. The second house was on Merrill Street. This is back a hundred and fifty years ago. It's been gone a long time. Well, there is precedent and and it's not shocking uh that there were two houses on this lot. If you looked at this in the nineteenth century with the map that. We look at today on my map, you'd say there's something missing there. Wait, it's not a big grand house like High Street that has a lot like that. It will, it had a structure in the side yard in eighteen fifty. Uh so two singles were there. Whether it probably was two lots, this doesn't show lot lines, so the lot probably got merged with whatever disappeared here. Um and they fronted on Merrill, uh which is not what we're proposing, but it's an interesting way to go back and look at history and see what that pattern was. There's the big church. If you go on the next slide, you you see the size of the church. You know, it might be a little bit exaggerated in the in the uh. The the artist's depiction of the church, but that church went almost from block to block. And there's a little fungalow in there now since nineteen forty-five. So. I I believe that house was already missing by the eighteen eighties, that second one on the lot, and the addition was added somewhere between eighteen fifty and eighteen eighty-three, you see on the back of the house. Uh again, pretty typical. That these houses get built in the early nineteenth century and. With the success of Newburyport, economically, people added to these structures as they they had the ability to do so. So that just shows the addition, but there's the house where the swimming pool is on the back of that house, which is Dick Sullivan's old house. The church is gone. This turned into a three-story federal. That house is going to the parking lot. So a lot has changed out here, uh but i- in the vicinity of this building. But the rest has pretty much stayed the same. Next slide, please. So jumping to the six C option, which is what we're here for. This is the site plan showing the difference. Uh if you can remember the the nine B three where everything was going on in here, right? That's inside those setbacks. We've now got this, instead of having. Two singles attached as a two-family with all this junk hanging off them, the garages and the rooms above them, just because that's what the code says. You could do, uh which is again, a hangover from probably the seventies, eh the the nine B three piece. Um. This is an opportunity to convert this back into a single, restore that structure, remove all the non-contributing elements that are gripping off of it. And put the preservation restriction on it. Put the second unit in a single-family house. Have just appear like it's two lots when you drive by, even though it's one. And have a small garage, have the the driveways reduced. This garage can even move forward as we go through this to reduce it even further. Uh the impervious surface. But you've got a single-family house that that's a- again, a uh colonial revival. This house exists. I came to this board. Shockingly, six years ago, I think I did Warren Street and Dove Street and came to the the ZBA. This house is twenty-three Warren. That's there. So if you wanna see that house and you you pick that up in the application, that's essentially the the same house that we we put over there. Uh the parking for this house is, you know, on the existing curb cut here. Parking for this house is there. There'd be a fence going down the middle. So. It's consistent with the neighborhood. It's got consistent lot area. Excuse me for standing in front of you. Um consistent frontage, the setbacks, the parking, the impervious surface, all this stuff. Fits and the style fits what's out there. So it's a good fit. It's not out of context. It's not out of scale, but it's two single families on one lot. It's not a subdivision and and we need the variance for the dimensional. Uh lot area. Next slide, please. So. Uh again, build two lines. We're staying right on the line of Russia Street, all the way from Ken Street. Go right down. This is, this will be, this is the last uh section of the building wall because we've got the workshop that's set back here, and then we've got. All of Street has its own built-in wall, so it steps back from Russia. So this'll help uh push the Russia streetscape along Russia Street. Uh right down here. Uh that's only a. I can't remember Scott, but that's twenty-two or twenty-four feet with, twenty-four feet with. Again, that's the same as the Warren Street House, but it'll appear to somebody going by if we're successful, like it's two lots. Uh and again, I had this traditional architecture. Next slide, please. I'll speed up. So again, um. No new non-conformities, no intensification of a non-conformity. We we have what we have. Next slide, please. There's your Warren Street House, twenty-three Warren. These are the elevations. It's beautiful. It fits. Uh we think it's a great house for that, and and everybody I spoke with in the neighborhood uh didn't object to that style. Uh I think some of them really liked it, but there's a lot to digest as you're you're seeing in the presentation. Next slide, please. These are the kinds of things that will come off as part of this project. So if we all do this together, if we get rid of this wall, we get rid of those steps, the granite steps, we get a railing that fits the the. Character of the house meeting probably the eighteen thirties. The vinyl comes out the house, the vinyl windows come out. We've we've got a good restoration window, which is not uh obligated. In any other fashion but the historic preservation uh review by the historic commission and the preservation restriction. Th- this is all wrong. So we've got an opportunity here to turn this back into what it what it would have looked like when it was originally built under the six C option. Next slide, please. Affordable housing, again, thi- this is the city saying, uh. In order to mitigate for these six Cs. Mitigate for what sometimes happens a- and it's happening here. These are apartments that are smaller, turning into bigger uh housing units with two single families. The city, uh I think appropriately said, and when it went through its last. Uh set of zoning revisions to this uh six C, said because that that often happens with six Cs. We need to extract some uh some payments from these folks to mitigate for the affordable housing issues associated with. Um doing a six C and having two larger housing units. And I'll let, and you can speak to that i- if if I got it wrong. But that is a part of the ordinance, twenty dollars per square foot of new space. Now keep in mind, if we did a nine V three and we added two thousand square feet instead of here in in that, there is no payment. Uh and there there, you get the same two large units. They're just attached. Uh so we're estimating if it's twenty-four hundred square feet, I wasn't sure whether the garage counts or not. Whether it's habitable space or gross floor. It it's somewhere in the vicinity of fifty thousand dollars. If we get through this, get through the historic commission and get through the planning board. Next slide, please. That goes to the city and the city deals with it at the Affordable Housing Trust. So one of the neighbors saying, well, I'm out there knocking on the doors over six weeks trying to find everybody. Well, they're they're, you're not surprised to see. They're concerned about the density. They're concerned about the volume, the scale, how many dwelling units, where's the parking go? People that are closer to the project, what are you doing with these two trees? What are you doing with the pavement around them? Are you gonna encroach them? What are you gonna cut? How much are you gonna cut? What about the preservation of that structure? What does that actually look like? Uh are you gonna do the wall? Because this this kind of looks like that maybe the wall isn't being done. You know, they wanna see the walls up, they wanna see the stairs done. So we hadn't drilled through all of that because that's largely gonna come through the historic commission's review. But uh we've, we've agreed, those are all things that need to be done through the preservation restriction, the stairs, the railing, the wall. Uh obviously, we are aware of the windows deciding and all the plastic on the house coming off. Uh people were, you know, again, some to- some of the directive butters were, especially the one with the encroachment issues over here with the carport and the fence. Concerned about how do we resolve that permanently? So so everybody's not, um, you know. Anxious about, you know, what what whoever's rights are, especially if this is gonna be sold. So we've worked through uh largely, I think we've worked through all the issues in respect to the fence, the carport, the tree, in respect to the directive butter. In granting them or agreeing to grant, should we get through all three steps. Uh a exclusive use easement to basically preserve and place what's there. Simply trim uh part of that tree, one limb that's uh over the side yard on this property, but leave the rest there, not take the tree down. Uh they want the tree to stay there for privacy, uh even though it's on Steve's property. We've agreed to leave it there. We've agreed to give them the fence. Uh care and custody of the fence. We've agreed to give them a couple of hundred square feet behind the fence. Uh as exclusive use, because again, we don't need the land uh to use it behind that fence, but we're not subdividing it to get into another handful of variances, but an exclusive use easement. Uh is what the tentative agreement is, again, contingent on this whole thing happening. The uh and and the parking, you know, the fact I said earlier, the butters have about ten feet uh right up against their house. We've agreed to give them an extra two feet in the exclusive use area, so they'll effectively have twelve feet next to their house, so they're they're gonna be able to park even a moving van there. And be able to open the doors and get out of the house with, and I can show you where that is on the site line. Um but, eh you know, the the neighbors. Appropriately, wanna make sure this is consistent with the character of their neighborhood. And we think very clearly, this is is the winning uh the winning plan in contrast to, again. A nine V three, which they're all aware of what a nine V three could look like too. So, next slide. So the these are some of the examples. The tree sits here. That dark line shows you where the fence is, so we we would grant an exclusive easement. Behind that dark line, which is on this property, but would result. So we we would grant an exclusive easement behind that dark line, which is on this property, but would resolve that uh, uncertainty about. What's going to happen with the fence over time. Fence isn't that old. We also hear the parking area to the neighbor is here. We want to make sure. That this owner doesn't erect the fence along the property line, going back to ten feet, which would make it hard for them to open their doors. Uh, so we we've got the parking moved up the property line about three feet. Uh, and we'll have a restriction in here that whoever lives here, you know, isn't erecting something there to give trouble to the to the abutting. Uh, concrete, we're doing concrete pavers on the driveways. We're replacing, you know, the people that live over here, we're concerned about the stairs, the fence, it's a pretty. Uh, a a pretty oppressive uh, five-foot privacy. Board-on-board fence that runs down this side of the property. We're going to put something there that's more welcoming. Uh, much lower, more open, more transparent, more in character with the surrounding context. Uh, same, remove the concrete block wall, replace it with a a fieldstone material. It's not very big, but again, it it's pretty pronounced on the corner, given it's an elevated site. Replace this fence on the abutting property is in, you know, it's it's dilapidated, uh. Is in bad shape. We're we're going to, should we proceed, replace that fence along this side property. The sideline of the property, uh, again, if we're proceeding on this. So that that's a. That's a sort of summary of the neighborhood input and the commitments we've made to get to this point. Next slide, please. So again, the stipulations, you know, people want to make sure these stay single families. There are forty units added in the future, uh, you know. Per the, per the code. Um, the re- the preservation restriction is important, making sure the Warren House actually goes there, so we, you know, they're. They don't want to see this turning into a geodesic dome. Uh, I don't either. So we're locking in what the the renderings would be in the submission. Uh, dealing with those easements and the fence replacement, the affordable housing payment. You know, that that certainly wasn't what what people were saying out there. That's that's a stipulation that you're still without saying on the six C. And obviously, all this is contingent on the third step of the planning board approval. Next slide, please. So the hardship criteria and findings, uh, maybe the least uh, interesting part, but the most uh, important for you folks. Is going through this stuff. So I'm just going to highlight it and and let you ask questions, but in terms of the hardship. Uh, for this particular property, I think it's really focused on the lot shape of the soils. The soils being the the mature trees that are out there, that are straddling the line and creating uh, challenges. Uh, for for the six C versus the nine V three development, we we all know in the room something's going to happen there and it's one or the other. So how do the soil conditions, which to me can relate to the uh, the mature trees on both sides of that site? The corner lot, the ninety percent of the structure that's in the front yard setback and the twenty-foot front yard setbacks, that's unique to this property. And it's not that there aren't corner lots all over Newburyport, there are. But there there are less corner lots that have this much open space and the opportunity to expand uh, that building footprint and volume. Which forces them into the middle of the lot, because this is. Uh, within five feet of the front yard and the property line of Merrill and the same on Russia. It creates this really awkward massing uh, pattern as you fill in the middle of the lot, just touching the back corner, ten percent of the. Existing structure. So that the placement of the building on the lot, I think, is unique and it's a hardship to add to it. Uh, the lot has two curb cuts, that's not hugely unusual, but what is is one is over fifty feet wide. Uh, on Russia Street. It has all these encroachments. Again, a lot of people might have at their neighbor's fence on the property, but we got a carport. Also on this property, so it's a little bit different in terms of its encroachments from abutting structures. Uh, and I talked about the trees. I think it's a reasonable request when you look at uh, the 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 surrounding neighborhood context. Uh, is this a reasonable uh, uh, application of of the variance and the zoning ordinance? I think it is when you look at it, its totality, and especially when you look at it in light of what the ordinance says, uh, the alternative is. Uh, the hardship isn't self-imposed. There's no change here in the lot area, is the ordinance, uh, you know. It was the way it is when it was purchased. Nobody's creating a hardship. I don't think it's a special privilege. This is, this has been done regularly, uh, not routinely, but it's been done. I I I've been here for at least uh, ten or eleven projects in the last eighteen years, working on six Cs or. Uh, previous to that, lot splits, that doesn't mean uh, this one's exactly the same. They aren't, they're all, I get it, they're looked at case by case. Uh, but this is, the six C is consistent, I would argue, with the purpose and intent of the ordinance. Uh, meaning what's been done in the last fifteen to twenty years by the city council, the planning board, the planning department. The ordinances that have been passed and the master plans that have been created in the last twenty years, this six C is consistent with. What isn't consistent with the master plan, what the planning department's done, the city council, the planning board, anybody else that's participated in anything related to planning. Is nine V three. So nine V three, if you want to look at what a hardship is, nine V three does, creates. Physical challenges to be able to meet the goals, objectives and and uh, strategies. That are outlined in every master plan that's been done here in the last twenty years, or at least on the two thousand and one master plan. Creating a gap-tooth effect and creating all that mass in the middle of the lot. It flies in the face of what people want in Newburyport, what they've said they want in the master plan. And a lot of the code development said of it, I mean, the established front garden setback is only twenty years old. That didn't even exist before two thousand and two. Uh, so we, all of us have done a lot of work in the last twenty-five years to move the ordinance. To build more of what Newburyport is known for, which is successful, livable, sustainable urban neighborhoods. And we've, you know, I think the city has taken uh, a concerted effort. To move away from twentieth-century zoning, which the nine V three still sort of sits there. Uh, and forces you to go into spaces on the lot that that again, are inconsistent with the purpose and intent. Of of uh, planning in the last twenty years. Next slide. Please, uh, so I think it's it's, the issues here to talk about is what's what's. What's appropriate and reasonable versus viable and marketable? It it, you know, can anything, you could sell a cardboard box in this city if you can get an occupancy permit and you'd make money. So this isn't about marketability. It's about what's appropriate and reasonable for the property in light of the city's goals. What, you know, when you look at the nine V three requirements, the six C alternative is not more substantial. It isn't beyond the confines of the existing zoning. This this existing zoning parameters are all over the map. Nine V three conflicts with the goals of of six C. So the the zoning ordinance in and of itself has inconsistencies, so so you have to look at the legislative. Uh, the the statutory construction of what's been done more recently versus what's been done in the past to to start to feather out. Gee, you can do a lot of different things in the code, which is the most appropriate and most aligned with the goals and objectives of the people that live in this city and and the representatives. That pass these ordinances. So this is actually a similar volume of the nine V three, but it's a smaller impact. There's fifty percent less impervious surface, there's functional open space. Uh, and you get a a quality and character that's commensurate with the sounding, the surrounding context. So that's not more. This isn't about an ask for more uh, in doing the six C than what one would normally be allowed to do without the six C. And uh, you know, when you look at the findings, uh, again, I think it fully meets the goals and objectives of the city, what I just said. And I think that I think that I V three can be argued, it's producing a hardship here in creating a a design. Uh, enassing that's out of character with this neighborhood. Uh, so next slide, I think we're just about done. Not going to go through these, uh, they're pretty self-evident, other than the uses allowed and there's no new non-conformities or no intensification. Uh, I'm sure you've looked through those findings, uh, which the planning board uh, would normally make under the six C. I'm not actually sure if you're uh, making the same findings, but these were, the planning board certainly has those. Next slide, please. It's the end. So I think the six C is consistent with the quality and character of this neighborhood. It requires a preservation restriction. Unlike the nine V three, it's got a high-quality building and site design. It's got this affordable housing mitigation for the affordability piece that nine V three doesn't have. It represents a similar volume, but less impervious service. It's not out of board, it's less not more. And it provides everybody the comfort of uh, stipulating what will be built, where it'll be built, and how it'll be built. Uh, so we certainly for the the directive butters. It resolves many of the issues with the structural encroachments that are currently on that property. I think that's it, right Andy?
Yeah, just the visual.
Yeah, that's it.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Craig.
Thanks for your patience.
Thank you. Um, okay, closing that portion of the public hearing, we'll go to public comment. Um, anyone in the room. Who wishes to be heard, just kindly raise your hand and give us your name and address.
I'll go, um, I'm Lindsay Lawrence, uh, twenty-nine Merrill, so the director of butter. Um, apparently part of next to nineteen here, um. So as a part of the community, I'm also interior designer, um, like the history and character are really important to me in the neighborhood. That's why I live here. And uh, I think they did a great job of the design plan. Um, I think that something like one of the explorations that they have of someone coming in for just building and kind of adding on. Or the art structure just wouldn't belong in our neighborhood. Um, I think that their plan really fits into the global vernacular um, of the other homes and insides and whatnot. And um, I think that their team has been very transparent. They've addressed all of our concerns. As you mentioned, the fence, um, our our driveway and of course the trees. I mean, we love. Privacy, um, it's, you know, natural shading effects and um, green space, of course. So, um, we pretty much have our support as long as this plan is kind of put in place and there's no adjustments.
Very good, thank you. Um, anyone else who wishes to be heard?
You want to go?
Yes, uh, Jim McCarthy, seventeen Rochester Street, and uh, I've been in that address for twenty-two years now. And the the primary view that you've been getting on this slide is the one that I see, it's died, it went across the street from me. And I get the previous owner, um, all probably, almost all the twenty-two years, I've been excited about the possibility that I might have. Uh, more permanent neighbors, um, there, the tenants have been good, but I'm I'm excited to um, have the opportunity for it to be um, more permanent neighbors. Um, I know there's a choice of how this could go, um, for those of you who don't know, I was on the planning board for fourteen years. And the nine V three rule that Nick refers to, especially the the five-hundred-foot component, I had a hand in drafting that. Because of the abuses that were going on at that time, so, um, one thing he didn't even cover this on the horizon here too, is the accessory drawing unit thing, right? So there's a, there's a lot of avenues this can take. Um, one thing that.
Excuse me a second, I'm sorry. And and if we put up the slide that just shows the um, the element, rendering, the, just the forward render.
Last slide.
Well, yeah, just so we, it's easier to just visualize.
So that's my direct view out of my side of my house for twenty-two years and, um, if if I can, um. So one thing that you you don't get from this and the neighborhood context about what the houses are is. Um, that is very new report to me is Russia Street from here to Olive Street is screaming for a front door. Because all you have is the back of the Sullivan's old house, and then you have another house there with a fence. So it doesn't really have any rhythm of a Newburyport front door. So you need, the buil- there needs to be a building brought to the street with a front door like that, because that's defining for me, so. Um, the other thing I'm very interested in over the years, I've had a chance to research Merrill Street, it's very, very old. Um, uh, into the seventeen hundreds, so I'm very interested in the preservation restriction on that house, um, for me. Um, it's, it 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 needs a lot of work, but it's it's pretty straight up and down, which means houses are pretty solid, and they're on a good foundation. Um, I applaud the applicant for taking the long road. Trying to give the neighborhood a design, right? So I'm very much in support of this design. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Carter. Um, anyone else who wishes to speak in the room in connection with the application? Okay, um, seeing no further hands, uh, do we have any hands online? Andy, can you go just permanently, I'm I'm a member of the, I'm logged on, but I'm not on the panels.
Oh, yeah, oh, yeah.
I can't see who else is logged on.
Sorry, I didn't know how to do that. Um, yeah, no, I don't see any other uh, hand raised.
I could, um, thank you. So seeing no other hands uh, online and no further hands in the room. Uh, I will close public comment and we'll go to questions from the board. Who wishes to uh, start things off? And Nick, thank you for the detail of the presentation as well.
Appreciate all that.
Sorry. It's okay.
Please.
Uh, one of them just is the nine V three option. Where everything gets centered, that would still have to come before this board, because it's a non-conforming lot, I assume. No?
No, no, it doesn't. It's an exemption in in this, I think it comes out of, it's a bit, it's a. Byproduct of the state statute, the exemptions for single or two families. So if you don't exceed the five-hundred square feet of gross living space and whatever else you can add to not create a new non-conformity in this case. You don't, you don't require a special permit for non-conformities. If it was five-hundred-one square feet, you'd have to do a special permit for non-conformities.
Even though it's two feet from the lot.
Yep. You you have to, all the additions have to meet the setbacks.
Right, can't create a new.
So it wouldn't be good to be within the the property line.
Okay. I also noticed in your nine D three uh, option, you had five-car worth of garages.
Yes.
Was that just to increase the impervious, so the comparison was more?
No.
Stravagant?
No. It it was illustrative of what somebody could do.
Yeah.
You know, whether they use that single-car garage for just storing things. These are only twenty-two by twenty-two-foot garages that are shown. Because they're one hundred and eighty, one hundred and eighty-four square feet. So you're not putting anything inside that garage, but your two cars and maybe some brakes on the wall. You're not getting a lawnmower in there with a car. So it's more of a storage uh, building, but again, but. I can tell you, sitting here, if this is, if if my client goes the route of nine V three, it may not look exactly like that. That's an illustration of what a reasonable application would be.
Yeah. Okay, um, I guess as far as abutters, I didn't see any letters of support. Or letters of complaints.
We so, oh, can I speak to, what? Well, I'll let, he's in a butter, you go first and then I'll speak to him.
Yeah, we did send one in.
So, do we have that letter?
If you don't, I haven't liked.
I didn't see any letters.
Well, they're here to go on record with that.
Okay.
So, can I speak to that?
Sure.
Uh, Walter.
Thank you.
Thanks. Over in my bag, I have a another letter of support from David and Nancy. Uh, could you just put up the neighborhood uh, map? Andrew, because then I can point to them, uh, because it's, this is important. I I've got forty hours out here. Uh, so here's the property. This is where Andrew and Lindsay live in twenty-eight. No, twenty-eight's the number of the, I know you're twenty-nine. I've I've all the numbers I put on the map. Uh, these are not addresses, these are the the surrounding context. This is owned by Jerry and Pamela uh, Mosin- Mo- Mozidian. They live here, they were living here, they're moving in here, they're selling that, it's on the market. They're in support of the project. They didn't feel comfortable that maybe being here. They have a letter of support. I never got there today to pick it up. I I left the little copy. Uh, I've talked to uh, Matthew Little. No indication he has any opposition to the project, but I'm not going to say uh, either way. Jerry and Carol, um, um, Lipski live here in an awesome old house. Uh, I think they're in a similar space. They're, you know, they had a lot of uh, issues with what happened here a few years ago across the road. Uh, they're they're not in opposition, they're not in support, that's what I'd say. They're kind of neutral on this, over on twenty-two Olive. Uh, this is where David and Nancy live. I have a letter of support, I'll give it to you, because that's the one I gave everybody like this weekend. Not knowing if people are going to make it to this meeting. So I'll give you that one, so you get the gist of what it looks like. It's in my, I think it's in my bag. Uh, this is uh, this is Kirsten Rowe. I think she's also neutral, you know, definitely, maybe the lot, you know, she had questions. Uh, so I'm not going to say she's in support. I couldn't find these people after about twelve uh, knocks on the either side of that house. Jim lives here, McCarthy. Uh, Anna uh, Wallack and Mike, somebody else. Uh, are in support of the project. Andrea Jones, who's in Newport right now, is supportive of the project and has the, she's supposed to have emailed me the the sign thing, but take my word, she's in support. Uh, Prince, I spent a great deal of time with, he's in support. Paul Pox lives in this one, he's in support. Uh, that that was my, that's why, that's why I can tell you.
Okay.
That's why they're not here. They're either neutral or they're in support.
Correct. Um, so as a square footage change, the original building stays the same, so the only thing in your. Uh, your six C option is the new building, and that's twenty-four hundred square feet?
That's including the, I think it's Scott, help me out, I think that's it. I think it's including the garage in my calculations, so it's a living space.
Probably less than twenty-four hundred then.
Yeah, the garage is two hundred and something, something, two sixty, yeah.
Okay, you went over the exclusive easement, which is on the back of the lot line, I guess, where the fence is.
Yep.
What's the carport issue? You mentioned it several times, and I don't see it on the drawing, and when I drove by, I never saw a carport.
Yeah, it's on the abutting property, and there is one, so I'm going to see if I have it in my bag.
When you look at the lot line, it doesn't look like the carport touches.
It goes over the lot line, not a lot, but it does.
Okay.
I don't, I don't know.
So you said you're going to rectify that, are you, are you going to move their building, or are you going to move your lot line?
Neither, neither, we're going to rectify with an easement.
That's it right there.
We're going to.
You're going to give the carport an easement, so you have two easements with this.
Yeah, so can we go to this site, so the carport actually leans over that line, but I think.
Are you talking the carport at the top?
There's a carport right here on that house that comes just over the line in the back corner.
Okay, so that easement will be the same.
In there that I think shows that encroachment. Yeah, they all have the couple there.
Yeah.
You can ask.
So you're going to move your carport.
Yeah, so here, yeah, you don't see it, yeah, Scott, I think you have it on the.
Is this it right here?
No, that's the fence line, the carport is not shown on this particular plan, but some good, good eye, it's right here, comes over, so you see the blue line, that's property line. That's the fence that's, that's, you know, on this property. The exclusive use will go from two feet off that blue line to give them enough room for parking here. Pick up the fence all the way to the back corner, it's about two hundred square feet.
Okay, so that easement is actually going to cover carport and fence.
Correct, and the parking space at the front.
Yeah. Okay, I don't have any other questions, Chair, all right?
Any other questions? Yes, she lied.
Yeah, Andy, could you clarify the, that ten B three issue with respect to the less than five hundred square feet on a lot such as this, as opposed to greater than five hundred square feet? I'm a little bit confused about that.
So the, the actual language, like about the singular two family structures on a lots that are nonconforming from area or frontage, the actual language of the ordinance is that notwithstanding, as we refer to another section, any proposed extension or alteration of the principal structure on the lot with insufficient area or frontage that would increase the floor area of the dwelling by five hundred square feet requires a special permit for nonconformities from the Board of Appeals.
Okay, so then if it's less than five hundred square feet, they would not need a permit as, as per Nick's explanation.
The way I read this, this is, this is the section that's triggering the special permit, so it's not, with that, we're not at that threshold, you're not triggering the.
Yeah, okay, okay, I understand now, thank you. Answered like a lawyer.
So.
You mean we don't understand it?
No, we do understand.
We like to use ten words when two will do. All right. Steven, anything else?
I don't think I have anything else.
I have a question. One of the butters said, as Chris has safely, I kind of like the way it is, as long as aren't any adjustments. I mean, we're not used to seeing plans for like a new house, where there's no drawings, no dimensions, no elevations, no numbers. So if we were to approve this, and she's concerned it may change, how's it locked in?
There are elevations in, in, in the submission, go to my bag, this is simply the PowerPoint. The application, so I didn't want to be too hourly. It's forty six pages, and they're all in here.
Okay, okay, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
You're indeed right, I saw them earlier, with all these slides that kind of.
Perhaps your point is a little unfortunate that the elevations are shown in the presentation itself because of that.
But I realize, I mean, you got a lot into forty five minutes there, and I, I'm not suggesting it either to go an hour and a half, but and you do have elevations, and so just, maybe this is a question more for the planning director, but if we were to approve this, would those elevations and site plans be as definitive as they usually are in our approvals, where they have to build what they say?
As much, well, so again, as anything that's incorporated on those planned locations, you know, detailed elevations, you know, et cetera, that's all encompassed because it's captured as the record plan said, obviously, in this case, in every instance, we're pretty much capturing the most recent version of the drawing. So there's some case, sometimes an applicant's uploaded a more recent drawing.
I understand.
But yes, all that would be captured by this, obviously, that becomes important to some degree if the board feels that some piece of that needs to be modified, or you want to specify any further than those drawings show, then that would be up to you.
Now, the other thing, I mean, I brought it up, the easements, are they also specified on those site plans?
No, they're not, because we, we just sort of worked them out. And the letter of support that they've emailed, and I'll do it as well right now, it has the, the exclusive use area, what I pointed out on there is on the back page of their.
Right, no, I just want to make sure they're.
Yeah.
We know adjustments to what we're talking about here, as far as the things you're offering, I want to make sure they're kind of locked down.
We could make a reference in any motion, hold on a second, we can make a, we can make a reference in any motion subject to the adoption and, and, and recordation of easements, you know, with respect to existing encroachments. And then we don't need to actually govern over the language of the easement itself, we'd rather make it a condition that it be drafted, executed, and recorded with the right history.
Okay, thank you. This is all very unusual for me, because we, we don't see a lot of these, I, I'm generally not a giant fan of variances, but this has caused me to think a lot, and I wish there was a question at the end of this, I don't really have one, so I will, I will, I will stop.
Well, we can come back, yes, we, we need to.
Any, anyone else have, and thank you, anyone else have any other questions?
I guess you brought that up, one of the biggest things for variance is hardship. And I think although we listed nine hardships, I couldn't find one that I would call, whatever define as our standard hardship. It's not an unusually shaped lot, other than it's a corner. Topography isn't sloped. There's no reason you couldn't do the nine B C offering, which doesn't require anything. It's probably not as elegant, I think this is an elegant solution, it's a beautiful idea. But I, I'm struggling with hardship, and, and we can always make up hardships, or, well, not make up hardships, but angle our way around.
I'm not sure if an angle is any better. I'll tell you what, can I?
Listen to the lawyer.
I say, let's, let's struggle, and we struggle with, sure, but, but I'll just say this. If we are having difficulty defining hardship, then we are evenly footed and in lockstep with the Massachusetts Courts and the legislature and just about everyone else, up and down the, the chain of command, because it's a nebulous thing at best, right?
Yeah.
We as a board endeavor to apply the craft of our best judgment and efforts run through this lens of the criteria, and if we are wrong, you know, an individual wearing a black robe will let us know at some point down the road. But in the absence of that, we're sort of still charged with imperfect tasks and trying to understand what we have and read that language in spite of its imperfection here. I think that one of the things that the applicant pointed out was a disruption of the building wall and streetscape in adherence to, you know, what would be doable as a right, we would see a disruption of this sort of building wall line, you know, that has an architectural aesthetic, nothing else. Whether that is a hardship, or whether it's partial to a hardship, or it's none of the above, is I guess for us in the collective to determine, among all of the other, you know, things that we heard.
I struggled with that one, because the house still creates the wall, and then the next building is setback twenty feet, so it erases it again.
Right.
So we're, for me, that's a tough thing to call.
And I think one of the, and, and Mr. McCarthy, one of the immediate butters also, who spoke during public comment, noted the, the addition of an actual front door as part of that architectural and historic vernacular. Whether, again, and, and we're talking about, we're talking about notions that have no right angles, right? They're sort of, they're, they're aesthetic, they're not, they're not scientific, but, but that's not unique to this, to this work, right? So we, I think we look at that totality, or at least we can, and try to figure out, is, is that sufficient to move us to one of defined hardship in the absence of calculus to, to, you know, to bolster ourselves in the hopes that, you know, we're hopefully mostly right, and if we're really, really wrong, an individual in a black robe will tell us, you know, down the road. But, but I, I think that that's the best I can come up with, and I just offer that as sort of an observation.
I have a question in regards to that same statement, so the, the other option that you showed us, which is the, the design by rights, was that also a multi-family approach? A two-family, and so, you know, a hardship can be financial or otherwise, right? It says in the statute. In terms of is, is the person you're working for, are they going to live in one of the homes? So they're going to sell, it's going to be two families, and they're going to sell it either way. Does, is there a difference in the financial value of, of one plan over the other?
I don't, I don't think there's any doubt, I don't think there's any doubt that this is a more valuable outcome to everybody. The applicant, the butters, the surrounding neighborhood, the city as a whole, this is going to be worth economically more. How much more, I don't know, but it's definitely positive. The other one costs less to build, but you get less out of it, and more importantly, again, money is territory here, as well. The core function here is what's the fit, and what's the best, what's the best move for this neighborhood, this property, and every board in respect to, again, in zoning ordinance, and how we apply it to this particular property with these particular circumstances.
Well, I guess what I'm trying to get to is, is your point, what is, is there a hardship, it is a financial hardship to go with the by right design in terms of this is more valuable, right?
We should, we should note, not to interrupt, we should note, actually, financial hardship is amongst the exclude, the exclusions to hardship. It can be, you know, it, 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 we can't rely on a financial hardship, but rather a hardship born of the site itself, whether it's topography, soil conditions.
Actually, since he would involve substantial hardship, financial or otherwise, to do a petition.
I think the premise is under this, the case law is that it's related to the property, as opposed to the party or the developer or what's up with.
Lynn's correct, it's written that way, notwithstanding.
Agreed, agreed.
We have, we try to steer clear of, we, we look for any other peg other than that, if we're, if we're trying to hang a hat, so to speak, but I, I, yeah, I mean, it's, if, if we're trying to, you know, I mean, we, if we're trying to explore all of the possibilities of potential hardship, and whether it rises or falls, we, we usually look at the, you know, we look at the lot contingent impacts, yes.
Yeah, I'm a hardship question. I think the fact that in this dense neighborhood of mostly single family homes, this is a unusually large lot, and ninety percent of the building is in, is in its setback. That's not, I mean, it's, it's not like we're creating a special case here, that there's not a lot of those. I mean, to me, this is what you need, and to me, that's, that's where I feel most comfortable about the hardship.
I think that, I would agree with that, satisfies your first strong there, right, the location.
That's the one that's most, yeah.
I agree with that. Questions, personal questions. Lynn, do you have any?
Could you go over the, the reasonable use, sorry, the, the second prong there?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, so what, what I'm, I guess, meaning that isn't spelled out there is, obviously, this is a design that's consistent with the surrounding context, the first bullet. There's a high restoration cost to restoring that building. And the nine B three option, not to just keep harping on nine B three, right, this choice, but it's the reality, we have a choice. There's, there's a, a pretty substantial financial burden of doing a preservation restriction on a historic structure. And you can go up and down high street and see good choices in windows and bad choices in windows on great structures. And if we go through this six C process with the historic commission, the windows that are chosen to replace those vinyl windows are going to be more apt to be appropriate for that building than what a lot of people do in the free market, that think they're doing the right thing, but maybe aren't, right? So windows are a character defining feature of most of our buildings, and it's one of the weakest elements of Newburyport in what's happened over the last thirty years, is window replacement. So this is a good belt suspender to make sure Steve or, you know, whoever ends up restoring that does it with the oversight of the historic commission, and then ultimately the city with the preservation restriction. There's an added cost of doing that, this process. The compatibility issue, remember this came up at three forty four Merrimack Street two years ago. That, again, statutory construction, look at the last set of amendments, I did, I had to do that back on thirty, three forty four Merrimack Street two years ago, because I wasn't aware about the affordable housing payment, that was an amendment, and so was the, the new findings that the planning board's been using for two years, which I have in my bag, because I brought them up, and we did a redo of three forty four Merrimack. The planning board has very good, well-written, probably from the planning department, findings of compatibility and making sure a six C is designed in an appropriate manner for the site, and they don't grant those special permits. They're the other board that has a lot of discretion here before this hits the finish line. And those compatibility issues, which I, I would remind you, if you want me to read them, they're in my bag, really important, because they talk about height scale, bulk, massing, that the, the, the context of the surrounding neighborhood in relation to the, the proposed building, the building placement, the building wall, that street wall, the build to line, the established front, that setback, that, that's all in the findings that the planning board looks at and determines whether you hit the mark or not in looking at the six C. So, and again, the last bullet on here is really, again, looking at the the great inconsistency between the massive scale, volume, building placement of what is only one that says you must do under ninety three versus this process, which is, yes, granting relief, but in order to get to where we really should be.
Great, any other questions?
All the questions, we'll close that portion of public hearing and go to deliberations, and who wants to kick things off? Again, we're deliberating with criteria for variance.
I'll agree about it if you'd like.
Yes, please.
I, I think I said earlier, I'm not generally a fan of variances, I don't think I support a whole lot of them. And I really don't like plans where somebody says, look at the horrible thing I could do. If you don't do this, particularly adding that, I'm with Bud, adding that extra garage is just overkill, as far as, look what I could do. I don't like that. On the other hand, in, in this neighborhood, I think this is a good solution for this lot in this neighborhood, and we've heard from some of the butters. There are no, I mean, many times, we have a whole group of butters who've come in complaining about something, and there's no one here complaining, just people supporting. As far as a hardship goes, I said earlier that and to me, this is not a unique circumstance, this is a, I mean, this is, this is a unique circumstance, when you have a large lot in a very dense neighborhood, where the entire existing structure is a three family, and ninety percent of it is in the setback. So, yeah, somebody could add essentially a thousand feet with a two family into the center of the lot and build a couple big garages and do all these things. Maybe an added third garage, if you really want to rub it in. But I just think for this neighborhood, I think it, it works well, and it makes me think, our Newburyport zoning of a twenty foot setback or wherever it is in these historic districts makes absolutely no sense. I'm a monthly guy living in the south end, I have sixty to setback, that's pretty good, in South End. So, you know, when I first saw this, I was quite against it, as I thought through it and thought about the alternatives and heard the neighborhood support. I've come around, and I think it's the best use for this parcel, and I can support this proposal.
Good, thank you, Mr. Swan. Yes, Mr. Swan.
Yeah, I just would follow up on what Ken said, I, I too can support this, and I think, you know, if, as we look at the ordinance, if we look at, you know, we, we're, I think we're kind of, we were kind of talking earlier in the question session about six C or ten H six C, which is the four, the four-prong test for the variance. I think that we also have to look at D with respect to the hardship, and there is some language in D that talks about the Uh, that talks about the. Other extraordinary and exceptional physical situations or condition of such site of property. Um, and I think that that gets to, you know, the ninety percent of the building being within the front yard setback, the corner situation. And, you know, based on that, I think. Under that section D, we can find a hardship here that would, that would put us through. Um, the four-pronged test on the subsection C. So, for that reason, and I, and for the, the reasons set forth in the, in the presentation that we've heard, uh, that we heard earlier. I, I, I can support this, this project to go forward, and I do think. That it does strike the right balance for this property, and I know that this board has on other occasions. Had, had applications come before it where we have asked for somebody to consider six C. Um, and, you know, I think when six C does come before us. It, 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 it does strike that balance whereby we're looking at both the ordinance as it currently exists. And the historical context of these neighborhoods, and I think that this is a positive, um. And would be a positive outcome for this neighborhood.
Right. Anyone else wish to uh? Add to any of that deliberations?
I, I would agree with, with both my colleagues here, I think that um. The location of the, of the building on that lot is very unique in the, in. Having most of it in the setback and having such a large open space behind it, and um. For all the reasons is that I think I, I could support this application.
I'll, uh, thank you, I'll note also that uh, under the tree and sidewalk ordinance, uh, DPS has indicated. On their review that um, they're not recommending any sidewalk upgrades or any street trees, at least not at this time. Um, any further deliberations?
I guess I'll just wait, and again, I'm, I'm still struggling with the. Probably the other thing that I, I just pointed out, Ken, is the new building sits primarily in the setback. You know, yes, it's in line with the original building. But if we follow the ordinance twenty-foot setback, most of that building is now in setback. We're allowing another. Infringement on the setback, right?
The, the code allows the building to be in line with the uh, street wall. So you're not, you're not breaking the rules, the rules for twenty years have allowed that building to be and encouraged the building to be where we put it.
There was an amendment to our zoning, uh, which kind of. Created an empathy in the application of that portion of the ordinance to, to allow it to be. It's, it's been Newburyport on.
Then, with that said, that's a perfect.
Well, excellent finagling, because that's uh. Well done, I, I, I don't disagree at all.
Um, still can't get my hands around hardship, so I'm still on the fence, you guys, go ahead, platform.
Um, all right, uh, any further deliberations? All right, um, I mean, I agree with my colleagues, and I, I do think that in, you know, on the, on the. The fact of in, being imperfect by its very definition, because everything almost needs to be, and our structure of zoning, this is a thoughtful. Uh, and, and with empathy kind of to the surroundings and the architecture and the vernacular and our code. Uh, and other circumstances of could do and what ifs. It, it's a, it's a very workable solution, um, so I, I, I feel like I can support it as well.
I, I just want to have one, one thing to adjust. One thing that you just said, that, you know, when I think of the people who in this application who are. Um, have standing, if you will, I guess is the legal expression, the abutters. But the city also has standing, and we're here representing the city. And I think from the city's perspective, and maybe I'm going back to what it used to be a selectmen of, was a town, of central west. I, I think, I, I think this is better for this neighborhood than what would happen otherwise, and I think that's something important for us. As we represent the city, to be thinking about.
It's a hardship.
And it's also, and it, it takes off of the, it takes off of the docket. Of what ifs and renders it certain, because these bricks and sticks will exist in. Hundred years, which means that it's no longer on the potential docket of things going badly. Future, so, so we stabilize the risk of, of a site such as this, we made decisions such as this, so I, I agree with you on that. Uh, we're just going to, right? Um, okay, anything further before we close deliberations and? Go into a vote, all right, I'll close out deliberations, do we have a motion to approve, and if so. Do we have any conditions in the same? Who wants to craft the motion?
Uh, yeah, sure. I will uh. Make the motion to approve the application for thirty-three Merrill Street variance. Or VAR two four dash eight.
Very good, actions made, um, do you have a second?
I'll second it.
Thank you, Mr. Swan, to most of the members of the law, seconded in by the senior conditions that we should have had. What, did you have?
Do we have any conditions?
I mean, the easements, uh.
The easements.
Yeah, these ones not.
Because they're not in the plan. So, okay, uh, I will uh restate the, the motion uh, subject to the easements shown in the presentation.
Subject to, yeah, easements to be drafted, um, executed and recorded, um, which will reflect. The encroachments referenced in the application and the materials.
That's much better.
Are there two of them? There are two potential easements to that.
I, I have emailed the letter of support that has the easements clearly shown to Andy and, and. I don't know what else to add to that, there's a good illustration that they have. That you could just reference the letter of support and the two people in the room that signed that letter that, that have spoken. Uh, I'm not telling you what to do wrong, but um, you know, you, you've got that document now in, in City Hall.
Very good.
We will be consistent with it.
Thank you, I um, I appreciate that, okay, very good, I think, um, I think we've kind of. We've kind of uh addressed that, so I'm comfortable with it, maybe it's your motion.
Yeah, Andy, do you have some?
Um, no, I think we can work it out, I guess it's still unfortunate where we get a document last minute, it's not in the public portal or the permit portal, per se. But we do have it in hand, so I don't think there's an issue for, hey, per se resolving, you know, in doing this. But I'd ask in the future if there's information that might be relevant to codifying or clarifying something that would be given, you know, earlier. In the record, just so it's a little clearer when we're codifying the written decision here, as we're trying to describe it, what the easements are referring to. So I think we can do that, we're based on the applicant's presentation, it's clear enough, I think that we can write that in the decision, even absent that document, I think coming in, which helps to clarify. But I, I think uh, in a normal, you know, instance, it'd be probable to have, this is something that Ken spoke into earlier. A clear color plane covering any particular detail and, and here covering the presentation would be helpful, but I think we have what we need to work with to resolve.
Okay, so, yeah. Um, all right, we'll proceed on, motions made, um, seconded by, this motion's made on Mr. Ron. Uh, with the condition of the subject to easements, uh, two of them, seconded by Mr. Swanton, calling the role, Mr. Chair.
I gotta get off the fence, yes.
All right, uh, Mr. Swanton.
Yes. Yes.
Yes, well, Jeff had a guess, uh, five in the affirmative, the eyes have it, motion carries, variance is approved.
Thank you very much.
Good luck to you, thank you for the time, thank you, everyone, uh, participation and patience.
Thank you.
Um, I know it's a long, yes, thank you for coming in, all right. Moving to our uh, next application this evening. Uh, this is the application of Laura and Jack Boys, care of Lisa Mead, Mead Teller, and Costa LLC. The application is eleven School Street, the applicant seeks unnecessary approvals and permissions of two uh, for a special permit for non-conformities. Uh, seeking to add a new addition at the rear and extend the pre-existing non-conforming lot coverage, turn to me. Welcome back.
So, I'm one of those mice. Um, thank you all, we're not adding a house, only a hundred sixty-nine thirteen. So, um, thank you, Mr. Chair, for the record, Lisa Mead, Mead Teller, and Costa thirty, Grace, for the new report. On behalf of the applicant, uh, Laura, who is here, Boys and Jack Boys, who are the owners of eleven School Street and Residence. Uh, and um, Scott Brown is the architect on this project. And um, Jack and Laura would like to construct two small additions on the back of their house, you can do the next slide, please, Andy. Uh, small addition on the mudroom and a small addition on the. Um, kitchen and then construct ballast strays over what is now going to become a little bit larger, mudroom to add some definition to the, to the rear of the property. As I um, kind of sarcastically said in the beginning, we're actually only adding a hundred sixty-three point nine square feet. Of uh, floor area to the home, it's in the R two zoning district. Um, the, you can go to the next slide, please, the lot area uh, for the house is non-conforming at five thousand nine hundred eighty-six square feet. Where ten thousand square feet is required, the frontage is eighty feet point forty-five, where ninety feet is required. And lot coverage is thirty-four point seven, where twenty-five is allowed. Um, and the front yard setback is three point three, where twenty-five is allowed. The only change in the non-conformity is lot coverage, and we're increasing about two point seven percent up to thirty-seven point four percent. Again, that's all in the rear, um, and a little bit of the side of the rear of the property. Uh, next slide, please. So here is School Street, um, if you go up to the left um, part of the property, you'll see Federal Street, and of course, that's the. Uh, Federal Street Presbyterian Church is that large building, and right behind that, um. Is uh, the William Lloyd Garrison, excuse me, the um. Yeah, William Lloyd Garrison House, nope, that's part of the church, next.
Oh, sorry, yes.
That's uh, William Lloyd Garrison's house, and so our um, house is down there outlined in the yellow, and you can see aside from the church. Is one of the larger properties um, on the street, um, the comparable floor area would be um, the. The corner house um, across from the church at the corner of Federal and School Street. Um, so the original home was constructed in around seventeen twenty. According to the assessors' cards, in between seventeen seventy-five and eighteen hundred, according to the district data sheets. There is no Form B for the property, uh, but it is listed as contributory on the data sheets. Um, we're proposing to add a hundred sixty-three point nine square feet and removing twenty point seven percent of the exterior walls. Um, the, there is a sunroom on the rear where we are uh, making some changes, but that was added. In two thousand one, when some reconstruction of the house took place, so that's a, a newer addition on the home. Uh, next slide, please. So here is the uh, site plan um, from Everett. And as you can see, you can see the small addition on the left-hand side, which is the proposed mudroom addition. Um, which Scott will point out in a minute, you can see it's tucked behind the main box of the house, so it's indented and you don't see it from the street. And then on the, on the right-hand side is the kitchen addition, which wraps around to what is now a bay window, again. Uh, you won't be able to see that from the street, but um, there is some really nice architecture that's going to happen on the back. Uh, which Scott will review um, in a moment, next slide, please. And here are the um, photos of the house, so you've got the um, side elevation, you've got the um. The driveway side and then the front elevation right in the middle, and again, there's a, a shot of the front elevation coming down School Street. Um, from Lime, Lime Street. Um, and then you have on the bottom, um, you've got again, a front elevation. Uh, and then, oh, excuse me, that's the rear, that's the sunroom in the rear, and then the center is the sunroom head-on. And then you can see that picture is taken back where there's a little garage in the back. Uh, you can see the corner of the building where the sunroom's gonna come out to, next slide, please. And I'm going to turn over to Scott to go over the elevations.
Great, thank you, Andy, if we could just go back one. So, this is listed as one of the older homes uh, in Newburyport, but um. I don't believe it's as old as, as seventeen twenty, as far as I can tell from what I can see in the basement, I think it's closer to. Um, eighteen hundred, and this thing was completely uh renovated. And uh, about twenty-five years ago by, by Al Clifford. Uh, that sunroom that we're seeing in that sort of middle photo on the bottom, as Lisa stated, was an addition. Um, back then, but you know, I believe that uh, everything that we're seeing in these photos, like, none of that, um. I don't think is original to the house, uh, there seems to be sort of very few old bones left, and it was completely renovated. And uh, prior to this renovation uh, twenty-five years ago. Uh, this used to be a two-family, so it's a little hard to sort of look at this and kind of envision this being a two-family, and uh, I haven't seen any older photos of this. Um, but it's, like, it's hard to imagine it being a two-family. Uh, it is interesting that this does not have a Form B, you know, just looking at this sort of like grand house, you would think, yeah, this, this has a Form B, but. Uh, the fact that that doesn't exist, I think tells us a little bit about. You know, what this might have been, or it may perhaps at one time, it wasn't so as such a significant house. Uh, but there's no question right now that it is a significant house, and, and it is a grand house. And um, as granted as it is, it's, it's missing some um, some uh, key elements, uh. And one of them is, is, it's sort of, it has a, a current kitchen there is, is rather inadequate, it's disproportionate relative to the. Uh, a size of the house, it's, it's a galley kitchen, uh, and that's one of the things that we're hoping to improve upon. Uh, the other thing that's missing is sort of a, a bit of a mudroom, or at least the drops. So that is something that we also um, are uh, planning to add as part of the proposal. So starting in uh, the upper left-hand corner, going clockwise, clockwise, this is. Uh, taken uh, almost on uh, the abutting property to the left, and uh, off to the left there, um. You know, between what is a freestanding garage and that window bay, you might catch a glimpse of our proposed uh, mudroom. Uh, the next photo is taken from the front. Uh, and in this view, uh, you won't in fact see any of our proposed additions on the back. And uh, right now, we're not proposing to do any work um, uh, to the front of the house. Uh, the next photo is, uh, this is taken from the right side, and you can see that sort of window bay in the back right corner. Uh, this is something that we will be modifying, so the new kitchen is going to be in that bay. And we're going to be extending that bay to the, to the rear of the property, so that will be uh, something that you will see here, but um. You've really got to work to see it sort of from a public way. Um, and then um, this photo, well, left-hand corner, this is taken from the back right corner of the property. And this is where we're doing that sort of very uh, uh, small uh, kitchen bump out, what, right where those condenses are, we're bumping that unit. Uh, that wall out about three and a half, three and a half feet. And uh, just to the right of that, that's that uh, one-story uh, sunroom. Uh, built in, you know, uh, twenty-five years ago, uh, which we will be making significant uh, modifications to that in terms of how that looks. Next photo. Again, one, one other view of the sunroom, and uh, finally, the last photo on this sheet. Uh, this is taken uh, with our back to the freestanding garage, uh, showing the area where we're proposing to put this uh. Ninety-four square foot uh, single-story mudroom, next slide, please. So uh, next four slides are, are proposed and existing elevations in a format you're all are familiar with at this point in time. Uh, existing elevations are on the top, proposed elevations on the bottom, really not much happening on the front. Uh, the one thing that is changing here in the lower right-hand corner, that's that window bay. Uh, which is about twenty feet beyond that front elevation, you can see that, or uh, you know, removing one window and infilling it. You know, as part of this kitchen, kitchen renovation, next slide, please. So this is the right side elevation facing east. And uh, existing on the top, and you can see how we're sort of modifying that bay, uh, excluding it towards the back of the yard. To create that little bit of a kitchen expansion, and also there in the lower right-hand corner, you start, you can begin to sort of see, you know. Kind of the modifications that we are making, you know, making to this sunroom, and really bringing up the level of uh, a detail that is on that. Next slide, please. Rear elevation, you know, uh, right in the center, that's that sunroom, uh, we're changing out the doors from, you know, um. Something that uh, eliminating the, the elliptical uh, uh, transom that's above them. Uh, you know, again, bringing up the level of detail there, and we're also adding this uh, decorative balustrade uh, uh, you know, across the back of the house. And uh, yes, it is a decorative element, but it also serves sort of uh. Um, a way, uh, the main reason why we've added this is that we needed to um, a, a way to sort of terminate this. Uh, metal roof, which is existing and is also expanding on the kitchen in the lower left-hand corner. We needed a way to sort of terminate that cleanly into something, so this decorative balustrade was a way of um. You know, detailing that, and um, and we did not want to modify roofs back there, because it was important to us to sort of uh, uh. Keep those windows on the second floor, um. Keep them, um, keep the integrity of them, so it was important to us to sort of maintain that, you know, uh, existing flat roof. And in a lower le- left-hand corner, a lower right-hand corner, you'll see sort of a fifteen-light glass door, and that's going to be, you know, the entrance to our mudroom. Next slide, please. And a left-side elevation, you know, the same side of the house is a freestanding garage, and um. Lower left-hand corner, that's the uh, side elevation, you know, of our uh, mudroom. Um, you know, in terms of material. You know, in terms of materials, um. You know, this house is built, you know, twenty-five years ago, so a lot of the stuff they were using back then uh was junk. Um, and you know, so uh we're not planning to use that junk again and um. You know, so a lot of the stuff we're planning to, to use is sort of lot rock resistance that we all know at this point when it's painted up. You know, looks like the real thing. And uh, you know, proposing kind of aluminum clad wood windows. Um, but I am trying to convince my client uh to go with the wood. Uh, a true wood product here because uh um Window Rep recently told me that. Would windows that properly taken care of lasts longer than the aluminum clad that we've been using for many, many years and. That makes complete sense to me. So um, you know, we might be sort of gravitating in that direction. And um uh with that, we'll uh turn back to me. Turn to me. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, so uh for the criteria for special permit for non-conformities, the first criteria is that there are no new non-conformities, and here there are none. As I indicated, there is the two-point-seven uh percent increase in lot coverage and that's the only change. As to the second criteria, that the proposed changes will not be substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood than the existing. Conditions here, uh the addition will be subservient to the main structure. Uh, it's certainly very modest at a hundred sixty-three point nine square feet. The proposed addition is co-plainer with the existing wall on the eastern side of the structure. Uh, the proposed mudroom will not be visible from the street and steps in. Main roof line will not be disturbed. The windows on the addition will complement but not match the existing windows on the main structure. Um, and additionally, as Scott mentioned, the decorative railing on the balcony differentiates the mudroom addition from the main structure as well as. The kitchen, which was, you know, his purpose of that, being able to stop that, that roof line. Uh, in the context of the wider neighborhood, uh the increase will not be detrimental um due to the dynamic of the neighborhood concerned size, massing. And volume overall. The one hundred and sixty-three point nine square foot increase. Uh, has proposed square foot to three thousand six hundred and thirty square feet. Um, just still less than the largest um residential property, um which is the one on the corner of Federal and bench um. And uh. All of a sudden, name of the street. Right at the school street, we're like ship, sail on the school. School Street. Um, goodness gracious. Then uh i- if you analyze the lot coverage, you can go to the next slide please. And one more. If you uh look at the lot coverage as well. Um, the other residential properties on the block, uh the proposed lot coverage actually ranks lower than six out of the eleven properties. So it still stays modestly in the middle of that. Uh, and you can go to the next slide and that kind of shows you where we are. So. The lot coverage is compared to everything, even with that two-point-seven percent increase, really doesn't. Move that house anywhere as compared to the lot coverage in the rest of the neighborhood. Um, so with that, we believe, um, if you go to the next slide, we'll just show you pictures of the neighborhood. Again, as you can see, that it's not gonna have a great um, a great impact on that. And the next slide. So here's that thirty-one Federal Street property, uh next slide. And then moving down three School Street, five School Street, that's um William Lloyd Garrison's house on the right. And then you have four, four School Street on the left. So that's sort of the Federal Street end before you get to the park. Next slide. Uh, and then we have nine School Street and seven School Street. Um, again, all familiar nine School Street right there, that's the next-door neighbor. Uh, next slide please. And then fifteen to seventeen, a large shop. Next slide please. And then fourteen School Street. Across the street, uh next slide. And sixteen to twenty School Street. Next slide. And forty-eight Lime Street down at the corner. Uh, next slide. And then you have um nineteen, twenty-one and forty-four Lime Street that, that carries out the rest of its street. So School Street's a smaller street, um but certainly this uh change to this house at the very back is not gonna have. Not be substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood than the existing structure. And that's the back of the next three houses. And those are the demolition calculations we had in case you needed them. I don't think they're necessary. With that. Happy to take any questions from the board.
Thank you, Turney and uh and Scott. Thank you for your presentation as well. Okay, um, closing that portion of our presentation, we will go to uh public comment. Anyone in the room, among our vast crowd of the room? Wish to speak and connect with this application? Seeing no hands, um. And a really vast number of online folks. Uh, I see no hands there. Uh, we'll close public comment. Go questions from the board? They don't wanna jump in with any questions?
Anything?
I was hoping we could go over those demolition calculations.
Yeah. Where do you unpack those?
It's safe for another hour.
It's uh. Any questions?
I, I.
Yeah, please.
Um, with, with regard to the um, the materials on the proposed addition, you had mentioned that, you know, the. The, I imagine you were speaking of the trim stuff when you were talking about the rawness of the material. What, what are you doing with respect to the um, the siding? Cause I know, I noticed that there are two sort of different uh. Two different choices, it looks like.
Yeah, well, Lauren, I think Lauren's gonna be cedar clavering and not put stuff in the house. And um the rest of it's gonna be a ship lab, you know, so what you're seeing here in the lower right here, it's like a ship lab.
Oh, okay.
Lunar material.
Yeah, okay.
Natural materials, cementitious or natu- it sounds like natural. Uh, this will probably be. Non-servicem, it'll probably be like a polyash.
Okay.
Like a burlap, I'm sure you've heard that.
Yeah, of course.
Composite product. Very good. Okay, um, any other questions? Adam, Steve, anything else?
No, that was great.
Uh, anything else? Um, okay, we'll close uh questions from the board and go into deliberations, deliberating the special permit criteria. Who wants to kick off?
I'll go again. Uh, no new non-conformities, first criteria, and uh. I certainly don't think um anything that there's just is more detrimental to the neighborhood. I live around the corner and this is one of the three year houses, I think, in itself and. A beautiful home and uh meticulously landscaped. And I think an addition like this will be wonderful for the family. You won't be able to see it from the street. And. I don't even, I don't even know if the neighbors will be able to see it, cause there's so much vegetation. Uh, with that said, I mean, for the application.
Very good. Anyone else? Thank you.
Although, I thought um, would you be able to put up, there was a, there was a slide that showed um. The, the lot coverage of thirty-seven percent compared to like the others in the neighborhood?
Is it?
Right, yeah, that one right there. I thought that was a very helpful schedule um to going for. I know sometimes we don't like to expand non-conformities, but this really, I thought. Put it in the context of, of, of what's in the neighborhood already and. And so um, I think I support this application.
Uh, yeah, I, I would agree with uh with. My colleagues here that, that this is, while it's an increase of two-point-nine percent. On a. Uh, already existing non-conformity, it's not, it's not uh. That, that much considering the location of, of the proposed uh changes to the structure, so I can support this.
It, it, and I, I agree with my colleagues. I, I would add the word modest, I believe it's a modest uh increase, so. I agree. Okay, uh, and it, it is very beautiful, by the way, the uh. Lands, this is a sign of the landscaping. Um, and the gardens are exquisite, so it's, it's a very elegant. Uh, presentation on the street and. Wonderful example of the house that was built in seventeen something, but looks it. You know, as the, as the, as the uh, the unrefined eye in the company of a great refined eye, I think, uh, that's the best way I can describe it. Um, okay, um, closing that portion, closing that portion of the public hearing, do we have a motion to approve? And we wish to make a motion to approve and any conditions or none?
I'll make a motion to approve eleven School Street, Z N C twenty-four dash twenty-nine. I don't think there was any sidewalk trees, so no, no additional conditions.
I'll start.
Great, motion's made, motion's made by Mr. Chairman, seconded by Mr. Swanton, uh calling the roll, Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
Mr. Swanton?
Yes.
Mr. Delisle?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Drop chat ready, yes, five in the affirmative. I say a motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, good luck. Thank you very much. Um, okay, going to our uh fourth and final application this evening. This is the application uh for. Brian Charles Allen Inc., uh the application is fifteen Everett Drive. A special permit for non-conformities is being sought by the applicant uh to expand an existing deck. Uh, and add a new covered area within the required rear yard setback. Maybe you're from that.
Good. Thank you, Chairman, members of the board. Um, uh Brian, I killed out the owner, is also joining us by Zoom.
Excellent.
I'm just gonna make this quick and read through the letter and then we can go from there.
Sure.
Um, this is a non-conformity for a rear yard setback of thirty feet. Uh, the existing property at fifty Never Drive, Newburyport is a single-family home. In the zoning district. R dash one, single-family dwelling. The new proposal looks to replace the existing aged wood deck, which is twenty-point-two length. By seventeen-point-five width. With a new deck of thirty-four-point-two length by seventeen-point-five width. Along with a new covered table roof section, which is fourteen width by seventeen-point-five length. The deck and new cover structure, we use an accommodation pressure treated wood. Deposit materials as required for the architectural and structural engineering drawings. The property land and structure will remain as per the single-family dwelling zoning requirements. The lot. Single, uh, the lot in zoning is S one, the covered portion of, of the proposed rear deck does not comply with the one-third. Or less than width of the back of the house regulations of the district. The back of the house is thirty-two width and the new projection seventeen-point-five. And actually existing new deck, so there's no changes to the, the depth of the deck. Uh, the covered deck, we need to be ten-point-six to comply. Uh, the existing rear yard setback. Is non-conforming, um. Given it needs to be thirty feet your own setback. And the existing deck is currently at seventeen-point-five. Uh, which crosses over to the setback by six-point-one. Uh, submission, the submission. Asked, uh, relief from the board to grant a special permit. For not before we allow those. Built out of the new deck and the covered room section off the rear yard. The new work, the new work will match the existing rear yard deck projection width. With an additional fourteen uh foot deck to align with the right side of existing home. Remaining building envelope. Setbacks with star yard in front are conforming as they exist and will not be impacted. By the newer uh requests. The work will help the client manage the sole backyard. Uh, the work will not neglect in, impact. Or deviate from neighborhood aesthetic, request mo- uh modest improvements to the existing structure.
All right, very good.
Thank you for the presentation, um. Where are the rest of your slides?
Yeah.
Yeah.
You have another half an hour.
Um, yeah, you know, the bedroom before that, the last before this.
We very appreciate the pre, pre-presentation.
Yeah.
Any uh? Public comment? Any, yes, please.
Um, Barbara Cook, nineteen Everett Drive. So I am to the west of this property. I am down here. And um. I would say in general, I have no issues. With what's going on here. My main concern is drainage and I'm not really sure that you guys even have purview over that. But um, you know. And I'm not sure how many times a year, but my guess is ten to twelve times a year, I have an intermittent stream. That runs in the backyard of my property. So. With an addition of impervious area, I have some concerns. I didn't see that. There are rain barrels, um, the, the cover letter mentions that, but I didn't see those on the site plan anymore. Anywhere, so I guess that's my. Uh, only concern. I would love it if, if the drainage did not change or affect what is going on to my property.
Great, I thank you for that comment. Uh, do you, do you wish to address that?
Yeah, that was the last line I left off. Uh, the contractor will be installing stormwater management rain barrels in the rear of the property, part of the proposed work, which will capture the home's rear. Root gutter water runoff. So the, basically where the, the gutters are and the new gutters will be, it'll be rain barrel capture systems for storm.
What's the existing condition perspective?
Not there, just down south.
So all of that surface area of the roof and otherwise just runs off and then is just given to the. To the ravages of gravity, right?
Correct.
But I have a contour map, but then.
Yeah, slopes of that here kind of slopes down into your property, which you mentioned.
Uh, okay, thank you. And thank you for the comment, um. Uh, where were we? Oh, yeah, public comment. Um, any other comments that you wish? Anyone further? Um, anything online? I know that your uh client is online as well. Does your client wish to say anything?
Um, I don't know if he wants to raise his hand, if he wants to add anything.
Let's see. We see a hand raised.
Uh, did not see a hand raised.
Very good. Okay, um, I will close uh public comment. There are questions from the board? Any questions?
Yeah. You wanna go first?
Sure. What, um, the rain barrels that you're talking about, what is it, what's the capacity of that? Of those?
Uh.
It's like, how, how would that, how would that work? Was, you know, if you get a. Heavy rain, is it just gonna like? Fill the barrel and pour out?
Yeah, so if it overflows the barrel, then there's just no let out where it would just continue to run down normally, so.
Right, so that's just like the same.
The barrel.
It's the same situation, just minus the, the ca- the capacity of the barrel.
Correct. Are they typically fifty?
Yeah.
Yeah. So you figure fifty gallons, um, how many?
Number two.
I don't understand that.
Well, lots, a lot of water, but, but we've seen more, you know, we like.
Oh, yeah.
Like, it, it, it certainly, if it's a rainy. You know.
It's only that little roof, right?
Yeah, it, I guess. Water would fill that faster.
Yeah, the, the, so this side here. Is, is new as well, the fourteen feet of deck.
That, the water went right through that.
Yeah.
Correct, yeah. And, and underneath right now, there's a concrete slab that's kind of degrading and um. You know. I mean, I don't know what his intentions are under there. It's, it's a low height space, but. Uh, I can actually discuss with him adding gravel, potentially some pervious surface to kind of help drainage.
I'm sorry, maybe I, maybe I misunderstood earlier. With respect to the rain barrels, are they taking the volume from the, the upper roof as well or just the, the new added roof?
I mean, it wasn't specified, but I saw it as taking from the main roof. I mean, it'd be more healthcare wrap in the main roof than the covered.
Right, that's what, that's how I thought, I heard it, but I just wanted.
Yeah, I was thinking on the left-hand side of the main house and on the right-hand side.
Okay. Um. Any other questions? Yes? Yes, so basically what's being proposed is that. The, the lower triangle there, the uh, I mean, usually we don't get involved with decks, so I, 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 I don't, I assume the reason you're here isn't so much the depth. I- i- is it the, the triangle, the?
The triangle of the covering, yeah.
Of the portion, sure, yeah. Okay. And um. So. As far as the neighbors issue, right now, there's a lot of roof up there and all that water runs off down the gutters and goes into the intermittent. Goes downhill, basically, wherever it goes.
Right.
So. You might, at one hand, a hundred gallons isn't all that much, but it's. It's better than nothing and it's. Prob, you know, considering all we're adding is the little triangle down the bottom.
Hmm.
I mean, that. A hundred gallons um. Coming off from mostly the main roof uh should help.
Could I?
With the downstream drainage, yes.
Sorry, I didn't mean it.
Go ahead.
Um, to partially interject, but also to supplement, I guess, to admit, perhaps to clarify, um, because this is coverage, right, they added this, this.
Yeah.
Right, um, but to the question of stormwater, you know, essentially, is it additional actual concentration or not? That you mentioned on the ground level, I, I don't recall, I don't myself, is it concrete or a hard, it's. So it's impervious already underground, so effectively adding the roof under, over it doesn't change the cover that's already on that portion of the property, right? So in essence, while there might be a concentration of water per se for that peak point of time where it's going to get, it's not necessarily, cause the impervious is already on that. So to speak, so I just think it might be worth to note that.
Not change anything.
Okay.
Yeah.
Right, right, so it's pre-imposed from a coverage perspective and concentrated water isn't necessarily changing here.
Yeah, and adding the barrels would actually help, so.
Right, right, so mitigates more than it does to that age of your point, right, yeah.
Yeah, and we can work with the contractor too to kind of figure out ways to help to, you know, divide up the water, so it's not maybe all pointed in your direction, so we can kind of help mitigate that further. You know, as we do big goals for sonnets and things like that.
Okay. Um, any other questions?
I have one, can we leave that?
Oh.
The drawing up that shows the. Your setback.
Uh, this one here?
Yeah, is the existing deck. Is, is existing deck smaller? So. It was further away from the rear yard?
No, it's seventeen-point-five is the.
Is the existing deck?
That is here.
And the new one's the same size?
This is just in line with the.
Yeah, so.
Section and then the covered portion over this.
Right, and the left corner is actually further away because of the angle.
Right.
Left corner's twenty-four, six, or twenty-three. Case cannot make it worse.
So that's the six-point-one.
Yeah, right, you're not getting closer to the.
You're not getting closer, but.
Yeah, he's extending.
He's extending but not intensifying.
Right, got it, right. That's a good, that's a good clarification on this one, yeah, yeah.
In, small numbers too, right?
Yeah.
Twenty-four, six, twenty-three, nine. All right, and no other question?
Very good. All right. Um, anything else before we close? Okay, closing questions from the board, deliberations, special permit criteria. Who wants to?
Okay.
All right, this is last.
Um, yeah, you do. Uh, I'm trying to carry my weight.
Yeah, so. The note taker to change names.
So. So. so we have no new non-conformities here, and as per the discussion, the extension of the deck does not appear to be something that would be substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood than what currently exists. So with that, I can support this.
Very good. Anything further to add?
I confer.
Yeah, all right. So it's good, feels good, we should do it?
Yeah.
Can I kind of say?
All right.
Closing deliberations, I do have motion approved and a second.
I'll make the motion to for fifteen Everett. Subject to the condition that the rain barrels be added as per the representation of the applicant.
Great. Motion's made with the condition of inclusion of at least two rain collection barrels as per presentation.
Second.
Motion's made by Mr. Delisle, seconded by Mr. Swanton, calling the roll, Mr. Chen.
Yes, Mr. Swan.
Yes, Mr. Delisle.
Yes, Mr. Chen.
Sorry, and Scott.
Yes. I'm gonna get two votes.
And I go, yeah, so five in the affirmative, the eyes have it, the motion carries.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
Thanks. Thank you very much. Okay, we're closing the public hearings for the evening, going into our business meeting. We have the minutes of eight thirteen twenty-two forty. Rachel, we have any changes, amendments? No, motion to approve.
Some moves.
Seconded, all in favor, voice vote.
All right.
Hi. No, no, no con, so the eyes have the motion carries.
I wasn't here, so I didn't vote.
And any other updates from the chair?
Well, Caitlin and I, I think you just want to announce that because you don't have any next pressing for next agenda, you could simply cancel your next meeting.
So.
So.
Well, that's slick. Are you sure you don't want to debate?
We made seconded, all those in favor of canceling due to lack of, due to lack of interest. Lack of subscription, canceling our meeting of nine eleven, is that what it is? Yeah. All those in favor? We oppose, no votes, the eyes have it, motion carries, meeting is canceled. All right, we have a vote adjourned.
So moved.
All in favor?
Yes.
All right, the eyes have the motion carries, meeting adjourned. Thank you, guys.